All right, the time is 5:33 on February 27th of 2024, and we will begin our regular board meeting. Board Secretary, please let the record show that all board members are present. And our Chief Communications Officer, Mr. Stephen Hall, will introduce students from Sherwood Elementary.
Thank you. To the members of the Board of Education, tonight we are honored to introduce students from Sherwood Elementary representing Sherwood's Student Council to lead our Pledge of Allegiance. Students, would you please come forward? And our students will raise their hand as I introduce them. We have Katie Kelly. Katie is a fifth grader who serves as Student Council President. We have Cameron Jones. Cameron is a fifth grader who serves as Secretary. And then the following students all serve as Student Council Representatives for their grade levels. Miley Pace, Riley Parish, and Sydney Walker are fifth graders. Bryce Carter and Elsa Holtman are fourth graders. They are accompanied tonight by their Student Council sponsor, Tracy Cox. If others are here tonight to support these students, would you please stand so we may honor you as well? And now we invite those who are able to please stand and join us in the pledge. And students, when you're ready, please begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll invite Dr. Lathan and Ms. Kincaid for a photo. with our Martin Luther King Jr. Essay Contest winners. February is Black History Month, so it is appropriate that we begin our recognitions tonight with the winners of the Martin Luther King Jr. Essay Contest. Elijah Gavel and Malik Lassio, would you please come forward? Elijah is a seventh grader at Carver Middle School, and Malik is an eighth grader at Pershing Middle School. In partnership with the Springfield NAACP, each year Springfield Public Schools hosts events that highlight the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., including an essay contest. And this year's theme was "Living the Dream: It Starts With Me." Essays were judged on creativity, clarity, and adherence to the theme. Elijah and Malik were recognized during an event honoring the 115th anniversary of the founding of the NAACP on February 16th. If you are here tonight representing the NAACP, would you please stand so that we may recognize you? Please join us in congratulating Malik and Elijah for their accomplishment. And Dr. Lathan and Ms. Kincaid, if you could come forward for a photo, that would be great. Well done, gentlemen. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Our next recognition this evening is an outstanding math teacher at Glendale High School. Shelley Myers has been teaching for 23 years and was recently named a finalist for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics or Science Teaching. Please come forward, Ms. Myers. Last October, Ms. Myers won Missouri's Council of Teachers' Mathematics Outstanding High School Educator Award. Later, she learned that she was also a state finalist for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics or Science Teaching. This is the highest honor bestowed upon a teacher by the United States government and recognizes teachers who have deep content knowledge of the subjects they teach and the ability to motivate and enable students to be successful in those areas. If Ms. Myers is chosen as the winner, she will receive a $10,000 prize and a free trip to the White House to be recognized by the President. So please join us in congratulating Ms. Myers on this remarkable achievement, and we want to take a photo as well. If you all would like to please come forward. February is Career and Technical Education Month, so we are pleased to highlight a recent example of the opportunities that SPS provides for students to gain critical workforce experiences. During the 2024 Tournament of Champions, Glendale High School marketing students and DECA members managed the Tournament of Champions retail store. Some of them are here tonight, along with their teacher, Andrea Hill. The TOC Store is a student-based enterprise started by Glendale students in 2022, so this is still a very new experience. Since its creation, students have averaged about 400 hours of preparation each year to plan and gear up for this impressive three-day event. Typically, about 30 10th through 12th grade students work at the store, which averages a customer purchase every three minutes. These student employees have applied what they learned in the classroom to master customer service, problem-solving, personal selling, and communication skills in a real-world setting. In 2022, the TOC Store placed third at the International DECA Competition and placed in the top 10 last year. Allison Norris, raise your hand, and Nathan Dills. They will compete this weekend at the Missouri State DECA Competition in Kansas City with the goal of qualifying for International DECA Competition with the TOC Store again this year. Ms. Hill, would you please share a little bit more about these students and their experience this year?
Thank you. So...
Step in front of the mic here. Feel free.
A microphone. I don't get a microphone in class, so normally I'm just really loud. This store is something that is very near and dear to my heart because Mr. Josh Scott gave us the opportunity, along with support from our principal, Dr. Groves, to start up a brand-new business from the ground up, completely thought-up, designed, developed, and executed by students for our community to add value to our TOC experience. And Allison and Nathan took what some sophomores a few years ago came up with, and they have developed it into something really great this year, where this year we were able to customize our apparel, specific to our teams, parents. We even got to bedazzle all of Dr. Lathan's... Shocking, I know, but we got to bedazzle all of Dr. Lathan's apparel for the TOC this year. And not only did we have a TOC storefront, but we were able to have a production facility behind the scenes where they were pressing and creating and developing new product on the spot as the customers needed it. So it was a really great experience for the students, hopefully for our customers, and our community.
Congratulations. And we want to recognize two SPS employees as most valuable players this evening. In celebration of our SPS United theme, as you know, each month we highlight an example of how teamwork and a focus on our common goal can make a positive impact on students. Tonight's MVPs collaborate to help Central High School students develop college and career readiness skills, which directly supports the district's strategic plan. Their contributions are also helping to make a difference in the expansion of college and career readiness programs. Let's watch this video to learn more about MVPs Seth Bossy and Sarah Keith.
My name is Seth Bossy. I am a world history teacher here at Central High School, as well as the assistant debate coach.
My name is Sarah Keith, and I am a college and career specialist at Central High School.
I graduated in 2019 as an IB student here at the International Baccalaureate Program. Central is very special. It's like a vast field of knowledge. With the programs that we house here, from middle college to A-plus-two to the IB program, we offer opportunities here at Central that is unlike any other.
Seth Bossy goes above and beyond the call of duty. With him being a former Central High School student, he understood not only the tradition, but also the complexities of our building as well with our students.
I go into classrooms and work with teachers, and we do soft skills lessons, things like what does it mean to be successful and how to develop financial literacy. And then I help them with Naviance, which is the computer platform we use. They do computerized assessments, and then it matches them with career pathways based on their results.
Ms. Keith, absolutely amazing at being able to implement the curriculum with NYPD. One thing I love is that she's built the rapport with students in order for them to be able to take risks and say what their future professional careers may be as they grow.
So me and Ms. Keith, we get together, we deploy these modules, and we just have hour-and-a-half conversations with our students about these applicable skills that they're going to need to be aware of when they exit the classroom.
Part of the usefulness of Naviance is creating success-ready students. In theory, these kids, starting at a young age, start to develop plans for their future.
As they go through the Naviance program, it gives us more intentionality to navigate through their academic performance as well to ensure them that they are college and career-ready as they walk across the stages at Central High School and Springfield Public Schools.
I am in love with Central. I had never stepped foot in the building until I got this job, and now my son will go to high school here.
One of the missions that we're trying to state as a district is that we are trying to build success-oriented students towards the outside world. And one of the ways that we can do that is teaching them life skills.
I'm just very grateful to be part of the college and career readiness team at Central. Both are just spectacular, and I've worked in several districts, but I feel very much at home with these two. So, thank you.
Same thing. I hate the sound of my voice. It sounds like Kermit the Frog. It's terrible. But I'm very grateful for my first year at Central to have a colleague like Ms. Keith, who is very practical and very easygoing to work with. And just while I'm here, I'll give the thank you to my department. And as they taught me while I was a student there, they are still teaching me to this day, and I keep learning from them every single day I walk into that building. And their experience is invaluable. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that moves us to item 2.04, Approval of the Agenda. So that the board knows, we have removed items from the consent agenda that board members have asked us to, except for item 7.01, which I'll just verbally remove from the consent agenda at the request of a different board member. So with those changes in mind, do I have a motion to approve the agenda this evening? Motion from Board Member Thomas Tate. Do I have a second?
I'll second, yes.
Second from Board Member Mohammed Kani. At this time, we will vote.
Yes.
Okay, the motion that the board approved the agenda as presented passes 7-0. Moving on to item 3.01, Public Comments. The Board of Education welcomes public comments about the issues being discussed. The Board uses this time in our meeting to listen to the public but will not comment or engage with the public during this meeting. The Board allows for up to 10 speakers per public comment period. The Board President will call on the individuals in the order in which they signed up. Substitutions are not permitted. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes and will be timed by the Board Secretary. Comments must be acceptable for a business and family-friendly environment. Inappropriate language, gestures, or personal attacks will not be tolerated. It's inappropriate to address the Board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meetings. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or the district office. If you have materials you'd like to share, please place them on the tray next to the podium, and they'll be distributed to the board members following the meeting. This evening, we have two public speakers. Our first public speaker is Laura Mullins.
Okay. I come to you this evening to ask what it will take for this Board to hold administration accountable for the decisions that continue to negatively impact our staff and students and blatantly disregard the expectations outlined in your strategic plan. First, Objective 2.2 in the strategic plan calls for review of organizational structures for administrative services with any revisions to be shared with the Board of Education. And if additional staffing is deemed necessary, such requests should be included as part of the annual budget review and approval process. This has not happened. This month, the district posted two additional administrative positions in Special Services Department as it undergoes restructuring and added two more building admin positions. This follows many other admin positions that occurred during other department restructures, none of which was done with the knowledge and approval of this Board. Secondly, Objective 2.3 calls for creating a fiscal plan to address employee retention rates among teachers and support staff. Since just August, 163 teachers have announced their resignation. This is the highest rate in the past three years, and we still have many months to go. We're also in pace to have the highest purge of support staff, which should come as no surprise with the loss of annualized pay and the resulting issues of inaccurate paychecks. Apologies don't pay the bills. Next, Objective 1.3 commits to exploring and expanding opportunities for students needing alternative settings, yet the one elementary program we had will be closed down in May, citing lack of funds. I would disagree. The money is there if you prioritize it. Additionally, Objective 1.3 also provides for consistent implementation of the code of conduct. This has yet to be followed since day one of this school year. By deeming some infractions as non-reportable minors, SPS is masking the true scope of our discipline issues. Threats are not just words to be dismissed, they are warnings. Physical aggression is not just horseplay, it's assault. Showing disrespect is not just testing the boundaries, it's a symptom of something more to come. Where has this gotten SPS? We've all seen the escalated behaviors. Some have made the news, and many others have not. Although I was glad to see the potential alignment with our neighboring districts with the changes outlined in the proposed Board policy, which has now been mysteriously removed from the agenda, it wouldn't have mattered anyway if we're not even enforcing the one we do have. We often hear the concern that our students need to improve academically, and I don't think anyone disagrees. However, it's already been stated that class sizes will be increasing next year due to the elimination of over 150 classroom jobs. This, coupled with lack of proper programming and staff available to support our students with advanced behavioral and academic needs, is not a recipe for growth. What we do see growing is the immense amount of public funds being spent on administration. Therefore, I ask this Board to evaluate if this is what is best for our students. Are you putting your money where your priorities are? Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Our next speaker is Dr. Wes Zonker.
I'm a Hillcrest High School, class of '75 graduate, happily retired SPS summer pre-K teacher, first-grade teacher, fifth-grade teacher, and 21 years as an elementary school principal. Almost two years ago, I addressed this Board concerning the use of technology in our schools. Those comments are as relevant today as they were then. You can review my comments, thanks to modern technology, in under four minutes by going to the April 26, 2022 archived board meeting video, and it's right before the 26-minute mark. Technology is a teaching tool, just as textbooks are. We shouldn't expect students to share computers any more than we should expect them to share textbooks. Like it or not, technology is our future, and we cannot afford to leave our students behind. I urge you to approve and fully fund the district's technology request. Discipline has become a hot-button topic, and it's a shame it's being used as a catalyst to force personal agendas toward nutrition. District meals are planned in compliance with federal guidelines. And what I've learned is, if students don't like it, they won't eat it, no matter how hungry you think they are. Before the district's breakfast program, there was no guarantee that students would come to school with anything in their stomachs. To those who want to make this an issue, I say, let it go. Discipline, as a principle, I've been spit on, hit, kicked, and even peed on. Severe discipline issues are not new. It's not intended to say that we should just live with it, but to understand, this is a complex issue. We have a compulsory attendance law in Missouri. We don't get to just send students home and tell them that they can't come back like they can in private schools. Public schools are responsible for attendance and achievement as part of their accreditation, and we are responsible for every single student. When students come to school without the social skills to behave, how do you think they're going to learn those skills? Send them home? That's what they want? Bring back corporal punishment? Sure, tell a kid, "It's not okay to hit," and then paddle them. Teacher once told me, "You're not mean enough," to which I replied, "It's not my job to be mean to kids." You don't bring about change by creating fear and implementing more severe consequences. You do it by building relationships and teaching appropriate behaviors with practical consequences for misbehaviors. And the biggest challenge is the time it takes to accomplish this. So I ask, if not public schools, who? Who will teach them? Will society be better off if no one attempts to teach students social norms? Thank you.
That concludes our public comment portion of our meeting. We'll move on to our consent agenda items. These were all presented during the February 13, 2024 study session. The Board was given an opportunity to review the items and ask questions at that time and in the last two weeks. Our recommended action is that the Board approve Consent Agenda Items 4.01 through Motion from Board Member Thomas Tate. Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Second from Board Member Kreis. And at this time, we will vote. Motion that the Board approve Consent Agenda Items 4.01 through 6.04 is approved, 7-0. Moving on to Item 7.01, Personal Elections Promotions Terminations and Employee Compensation Plan Changes. This was also presented during our February 13, 2024 study session, and the Board was given an opportunity to review the items and ask questions at that time and in the last two weeks. This time, the recommended action is that the Board approve the Personnel Elections Promotions Terminations and Employee Compensation Changes as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Board Member Thomas Tate. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Board Member Bruner. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, we will take a vote. The motion that the Board approve these items passes 6 in favor and 1 abstention. Moving on to Item 8.01, the Treasurer's Report. The recommended action is that the Board approve the Treasurer's Report as presented. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I'll move.
Motion from Board Member Kreis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Board Member McCoskey. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, we will vote. The motion that the Board approve the Treasurer's Report as presented passes 7-0. Moving on to unfinished business, Item 9.01, which is the student device purchase. The Board was provided information during our February 13 meeting and given the opportunity to provide comments and ask questions at that time and over the last two weeks. The recommended action is that the Board approve the student device purchases as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Board Member Thomas Tate. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Board Member Bruner. Is there any discussion on this item?
First off, thank you for the information that we were provided between last meeting and this meeting that provided feedback from kindergarten teachers and principals. It was really interesting to read. I really do appreciate not just having the results of a survey, but to also have the individual comments from so many kindergarten teachers and principals. 87, is that right?
I think so.
Responded to this. It was... As I read through this, a couple of things became clear to me, one of which is apparently the kindergarten teachers are having issues with logging in on iPads. And one of the cases that was stated for why they wanted one-to-one with a device in general or with the Chromebooks was so that students could log in. And this... The other overwhelming response here as to why they wanted Chromebooks was to meet the district's requirement for district assessments or our Galileo testing. I went through and counted up in these responses how many said that. Thirty-two of these respondents, that was overwhelmingly the response. If we're going to do district-mandated testing, aka Galileo, then Chromebooks one-to-one are the best way to do that. And as a side note, we need them one-to-one because kindergartners have a hard time logging in and out. So... So my stance on this remains the same after seeing this. I still fully believe we need to be committing to, at these youngest ages, not having devices in students' hands. And I was happy to see a lot of the responses on here seemed to indicate agreement with that. And that those that are using them surely aren't using them all day. But that puts me with the predicament again, why it's such a $550,000 investment for something that everyone's telling us they're only using periodically. And the overwhelming result of why they need them is for Galileo testing. And I'm in support of this thing that we're doing with Galileo, and we've teachers have spoken to us and told us how it's very useful. I do have my questions with it in K through two. The best way to understand what a kid knows in K through two is going to be one-to-one student and teacher and pencil and paper. And I think, and I think a lot of these teachers would agree with that, that if you that you really have to take the results of Galileo in kindergarten with a big grain of salt. And you need to overlay that with what you know about that student. So to me, what I'm seeing here is a very classic example of what we hear about teaching to the test. What I'm seeing in this information is, we need the Chromebooks so that we can do the Galileo testing. I'm not seeing much of a case in here at all from many of these teachers that says, "We need this because it's what's best for the students to learn." It's, this is what's best for us to test the students and to do so, I guess, efficiently. And if the trade, and I'm in favor of Galileo, but in these early grades, especially before it's a requirement to do map testing, I wonder if it's worth the trade-off. I'm looking at it, if the trade-off is, on one hand, we have Chromebooks in every classroom, and there's the opportunity there for a lot of screen time. And on the other hand, we don't have them, but the trade-off is, we can't do Galileo in K through two. Maybe that's what we should be doing, maybe that's what the students need. So for all those reasons, I still can't bring myself to support putting devices in hands of kindergarteners. I understand it's what many teachers are saying they need, but I think there's a big parentheses there that says, "We need this to do what the district is asking us to do," which is district assessments. And my question is, how valuable are those assessments in K through two if it's done on a device? And if it's done with something that might ultimately compromise what we're trying to do, is we're trying to educate kids, we're not just trying to test them? So I guess I need to motion to separate the kindergarten Chromebooks. And I apologize if I would have done this before, but I had a series of questions that were asking on email that led up to this, and then I kind of ran out of time to actually make this formal request because I didn't want to make this request without having those questions answered. So the motion is to remove the the purchase of 1,867 HP touchscreen Chromebooks for use in kindergarten classrooms from the vote on the rest of the Chromebooks in this in this agenda item.
There's been a motion by Board Member Byrne to remove the vote on the kindergarten Chromebooks, the 1,867 touchscreen Chromebooks for use in kindergarten classrooms.
To vote on separately, for clarification.
To vote on separately, okay. Is there a second on?
I'll second that.
There's a second from Board Member Mohammed Kani. Is there any discussion on the motion to remove the kindergarten Chromebooks for a separate vote? Seeing none, we're going to vote on
Let me speak to that too then, because this is another
I just asked if there was any discussion, so do you have a discussion on that matter?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'd like to I'd like to focus on what my intent is here. My intent is to do what's best for the students of the district, so that they can so that we can be, for example, more proficient in reading by the time our students get to third grade, so that we can be more proficient in math. And I think we all agree that we're not living up to exactly where we want to be. And I do think that one-to-one instruction and pencil to paper is important if we're going to do that. So I'd like to talk about I don't want to focus on, this isn't me trying to take away things from the teacher, because I would be very much in support of other things for teachers. And last year when we had this vote, I, you know, we didn't have this information on why they wanted one-to-one versus something else. So I had left open the door to for there to be a proposal that was something less than one-to-one. We never did receive that or any communication as to why. It is now 12 months later that I'm seeing, that I'm learning, and I'm grateful for learning this, that the reason is that they are having trouble logging in and logging out. Okay, so I understand why the request is for one-to-one now. But this is also a $550,000 expenditure, and I would love to be having discussions about other ways that we can impact the classroom, invest in the classroom, particularly in these younger grades, K through two, that would have a greater impact on literacy and math, for example, than Chromebooks with. This is a huge investment, and we're being told that they're going to be sitting on the shelves the majority of the time. So that doesn't make sense to me to make that investment for something that we're not using all the time. I'd love to talk about things like classroom sizes, other investments in things like behavior interventionists, reading coaches, other investments in hard copy materials that the children can have in the classroom and to take home. All of those things are up for discussion, and I would love to invest and equip our teachers with what they need so that we can ultimately be successful in things like literacy and math in these younger grades where we know that it's so important. So to all those teachers that are listening out there and are concerned that I don't want to give them what they say they need, I guess to speak to them, I would say, "I'm questioning, based on this information, if you need it to teach the kids or if you need it to live up to the obligations that the district is providing you for district assessments." And if the latter is the answer to that, then let's talk about it and find other ways to better equip you to do the job that everyone agrees is most important, which is getting the students what they need to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak. I do appreciate the information and data we were provided. I do read the comments differently than my board member to my left. And I see that teachers are using them more for just testing and that logging on is not the only reason that they want to have devices for have one-on-one devices. As one of two board members who are educators here at the table, one who works with early childhood reading and language with students, I understand the challenges of having to share devices. Time on task is something that teachers are accountable for, and trying to get enough opportunity for instructional time in classrooms is hard when you have to spend time with transitions, and transitions are hard for young kids. There are many programs that are useful programs for young people in these classes to use their Chromebook. It's a tool, just like paper and pencil is a tool. We don't sit our kids at a table for the whole school day with a paper and pencil in kindergarten either, because play is important also for them. We make sure that they have playtime, and they have mealtime, and they have, I don't know if they still do naptime or not in kindergarten, but I think in preschool they still do. There's lots of things that goes into an educational experience for kids, and it's not just paper and pencil. It's one of many. And in kindergarten, they are developing those skills, and it is important to have paper and pencil, but it's one of many tools that they should have in the classroom. As a, again, educator, I think it's important to note that teachers do know what they need and how to use them effectively. They spend a lot of time learning and researching and studying and being trained on how to teach children effectively. Children in kindergarten should learn, in our technologically advanced society, how to use technology. I'm not saying that they should be sitting at a computer all day, that would not be what I'm supporting. But there is a place for it, even in kindergarten classrooms. And I would support giving these teachers another tool for supporting their children's learning in the classroom.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on Board Member Byrne's motion to remove the kindergarten Chromebooks and vote on them separately?
I just have a few comments. I was glad to see, first of all, thank you to Dr. Lathan and your team that put this all together, and a special thank you to the principals and the teachers that actually took the time to fill it out. Because we've got spring-like weather out there, and kids are busy, and teachers are busy. And so to ask them one more time to take a survey like this, I think it was important that they do it, it gave us good information. But I also know that it was one more thing that we added to their plate on a given day. When I looked down through here, the pie graphs were helpful always, but I paid particular attention to the comments, I think, as the other board members did. And I went through and circled some things that I was glad to see what I consider a balance in here between textbooks, reading time, screen time. I didn't see anything in here that alarmed me that students were spending an unnecessary amount of time on the computers when they had them. But I'm interested in comments like that, like this one. It's helpful to have specific targeted instruction at appropriate level. They were talking about a Chromebook. We use Chromebooks for skill practice and listening to reading. It helps with writing, it helps with independent stations. Again, somebody said it's used for writing. We use stations for the district literacy and math online programs. Students have more practice time. They're completing imagined math and reading. So I guess it just depends on, you know, which ones, which comments you're paying most attention to. But what pleased me as a teacher and as a board member is I see a balance there. I think everybody's sensitivity has been raised to this issue of whether or not there's too much technology. But as I said a couple of weeks ago, this is a biliterate generation. They are going to have to learn to read from paper, they're going to have to read from technology. And I, again, I just didn't see anything on here that really concerned me enough to not do what the teachers and, quite frankly, the principals have clearly given us direction to do.
Thank you. And again, we're on the motion to remove the kindergarten Chromebooks for a separate vote. Is there any further discussion on that motion?
Great, thank you. And I want to echo, appreciate the feedback and survey results, there was a lot of time put into this, you could tell that. I also reached out to others to learn more about it, and I appreciate their feedback as well. Thank you very much. Kindergarten teachers, the majority of them and the principals are in favor, you know, of using them, especially each student having a Chromebook. And Galileo, it's a great assessment tool for teaching, and the teachers will know where the students are, and it helps determine, you know, what strategies are required to learn and grow. You know, it's a good teaching tool and shouldn't be shared, just like Dr. Zonker said. I appreciate you saying that. So just want to say that I think that that we heard from the principals and the teachers that they wouldn't like it. We heard it last year, we're hearing it again this year.
Board Member Mohammed Kani, did you want to?
Thank you, yes. I concur, the feedback's been very valuable, especially as it included principals who are likely to have more experience across decades and buildings or even districts. So we all look at the data and the comments, and we walk away with something slightly different. My understanding, looking at it is, and reading all the comments, is that technology is used in kindergarten for primarily two purposes. One is the literacy reading and math practice, and they're using them for centers where they learn and they practice independently while the teacher is reading with another group. So while the teacher's busy with a small group, the Chromebook or the iPad right now is reading to them, and they're practicing math. So not necessarily being used for a writing or keyboarding type skills. And that distinction was important, is important to me. And then the second reason that is obvious is their use in Galileo testing. Several of the educators expressed that technology use in early childhood is not developmentally appropriate. Something that I concur with. There's also clearly a frustration because so many feel that they're expected to test the students on a device, which then requires the students to be familiar with the Chromebooks, and then that takes time away from teaching. So in my opinion, testing students with technology is also not developmentally appropriate. I want to go back to two years ago. We understood from Dr. Lathan that the district acknowledged the overuse of screens in the classrooms, and that was to the detriment of the academic achievement. And it did come with some cost to the learning environment in terms of those soft skills or socialization skills. And at that time, there was a promise made to a shift to a more balanced approach. And we were also told to be patient because it would take time to secure print resources and to implement the necessary professional development that our teachers needed to be able to get away from the dependence on these screens that had previously been heavily encouraged. So I guess what I'm saying is that essentially we had inherited a crisis that needed to be resolved. And this is precisely why I urged the district to develop a comprehensive technology plan, so that we could have, let's say, a roadmap on our plan towards this balanced learning. And as Mr. Byrne had previously indicated, we haven't had any updates specific to this concern, and I don't know where that sits in the process, but here we have the ask coming to us. And I understand why Mr. Byrne wants to separate the ask piece for kindergarten separate from the rest. For me personally, it seems reasonable that almost three years after talking about it, we should be at a point or be able to say that for the youngest of learners, we are committed to healthy habits, which in my opinion include no-tech learning and no-tech testing. And I think it's important to say that I did not say no-tech or no-tech skills training. I also think it's going to go a long way towards discipline down the road with our little kiddos who will develop better peer interaction skills. And as Mr. Byrne just stated, what I'm uncomfortable with is that we have put our teachers in this position where they understand technology is not necessary for early childhood and for learning, yet so many of them feel that they need them because of what is being asked of them or because they don't have the classroom supports they need to get away from the screens. There's not enough adults in the room, or the students aren't where they need to be, so we need screens to read to kids. And for me, this goes back to being a question of what do children and teachers want rather than what do they need to learn and to teach? I have a couple of questions to ask before I can make my decision. But before I do that, I want to point out this graph and the communication that was sent to us with respect to DESI and Missouri Learning Standards. So the requirement by DESI is for students to produce and publish writing using technology in fourth grade. For me, this in no way justifies their use for reading and math. I would say up to third grade even. So the DESI standard specifically has to do with producing and publishing, which to me, as I read it, translates into computer lab skills. And they specifically indicate to introduce keyboarding skills in second grade, which somehow has been interpreted by our team as mandating keyboarding skills by second grade. I don't agree with the stance, and I'm going to quote this from an email received, "That strategic use of Chromebooks initiates kindergartners into digital literacy, positioning them for future success." In my opinion, it is the strategic use of teachers and books and maximizing teacher-student time and teacher-family engagement that positions our students for academic success. I'd have to say that I personally would like to see the $557,000 put towards resources that help and support our kindergarten teachers, and that would include cessation of testing, which I think is cumbersome. So I have a couple of questions to ask, and one I've asked before, but it's important to me to ask it again. Dr. Lathan, with this now that's been separated out by Mr., or proposed to be separated out, this $557,000. $557,000, if we make this purchase, will the district have enough funds still next year to support printed material in the curriculum, and by that I mean books in the hands of children and workbooks in the hands of children, and books and workbooks that then will go home with the students so that their parents and guardians can help their children?
I believe you approved in December our new adoption. We have our adoption schedule, and as we bring those adoption materials that we need, we actually attach a budget to it. So as it relates to this particular purchase, it does not prevent us from buying the necessary materials that we need, but remember, the materials we buy are aligned to our curriculum adoptions.
Right, so that would be the phonics. So there'll be enough for phonics books as part of that purchase?
The purchase for the curriculum that we, that you approved in December, it laid out everything, all the print materials that were coming with each of those items.
Okay, so for mathematics, we have the workbooks for the summer, but we don't have any yet for the regular school day, aside from the IM workbooks. We don't have anything going home during the normal school year.
Outside of the homework materials, are you, I mean, if this is a specific question, maybe I'll need to answer it after this meeting, if you could put it in writing to me. I'm not, you're asking me about something I don't have any information for?
Well, we previously talked about this, and there isn't anything that goes home for math for the students right now. Will we have something going home, like a workbook?
Dr. Majors, would you, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So actually, I'm really excited to share. The curriculum team has been working on a multitude of resources for families. Maybe that's something that we can share in this week's board update, but along with that is practice for, it's already done for next year by grade level. So the curriculum team, after the board meeting, when that was one thing that this board wanted, I took it back to the curriculum team, and you're going to love it when you see it. Really good. So yes, in answer to your question, yes.
Is that a yes question? Okay.
Also, with phonics embedded in the benchmark curriculum are phonics books for students, so they'll have their own books.
So there's books for students to go home to read, and there are books/workbooks in mathematics for students to take home?
I wouldn't say workbooks. There's resources for families, for teachers to send home, for families, for kiddos to work on at home if, if they choose to. So if a parent reached out to the teacher and said, hey, I'd like some additional practice for my kiddo, the curriculum team is building that by grade level, by standard, for families to have access to. So teachers can share that with families.
On printed resource?
Yes.
I don't understand what you mean by if. So it won't be routine, so kids won't have little books to take home routinely?
So right now, homework isn't a requirement, and I know that varies. If a teacher feels like a student needs extra practice, they may send it home with a suggestion to complete it at home, but I mean, that's a larger conversation, but it will be available to teachers and families.
So homework is not a requirement. So would this purchase of Chromebooks for kindergarteners have any impact on that separate conversation?
No. No, what I, what I just shared, that's happening regardless.
So if this purchase were made, and the decision was also made to have homework routinely, would there be sufficient funds to have printed material for the students to do homework?
Yes.
Okay, that's the question that I was looking for you to answer. All right. Then my second question.
And Board Member Mohamed Kani, I'll just note that there's about a minute left of your time.
Thank you. My second question is, seeing all the comments we have from the kindergarten teachers and principals, will the district continue testing kindergarteners with Galileo, Dr. Lathan?
Yes, and we actually made the necessary adjustment this year. Number one, the state requires us within 40 days to provide, to assess students. So there's already assessment required by the state. That's a separate, I know.
Right, by technology.
Let me finish, please. The, we made the adjustment, if you recall, last year when the teachers presented the Galileo at the middle of the year. There were suggestions about the testing timeline shifting at the end of the year. Also, we received feedback from kindergarten teachers not to administer the beginning of the year assessment, but to administer the Galileo assessment at the middle of the year. That is the plan, to continue moving forward with that at this time.
And Board Member Mohamed Kani, your time has elapsed. So are there any other?
I don't have anything else to say. I have my eye on the time.
See, I wrote it down.
Are you suggesting I didn't give you 10 minutes?
Definitely.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments on Board Member Byrne's motion to remove the kindergarten purchase?
Yes, I'll take a second opportunity. Dr. Lathan, on the Galileo testing, it's mandated by the state for us to, for us to do our own district assessments for kindergartners. Is that what you said?
State requirement for assessments at the begin, within 40 days of the school year. I'm pretty sure it's 40 days, right? 30, first 30 days of school year.
It doesn't have to be digitally based, though, by state?
No, it does not have to be digitally based.
So by, for kindergarten, by middle of the year, we're required. So last year, if you remember, with the literacy requirement, the district issued four approved vendors for testing, which is a requirement statewide, and all four are online vendors. So that is a requirement. So kindergarten, I believe their requirement, I would have to look to make sure, but they have to do the middle of the year because that's what's reported up to DESI. And so we have to be, Galileo was approved for this year.
I guess, so theoretically speaking, the requirements we have to do per the state to be in compliance with DESI, we don't have to administer those on devices?
We do have to, yes. We do have to approved, one of, we have to utilize one of the DESI-approved vendors for assessment.
And the DESI-approved vendors do not offer a written version?
Correct. They're all online assessments.
Okay. Mr. Kreis, you had mentioned that Galileo is a valuable tool, and I'll agree with you, Galileo is a valuable tool. However, I wanted to make the distinction of what my comments were. Just because it's a valuable tool in, say, sixth grade, doesn't mean it's a valuable tool or as valuable a tool in kindergarten. My issue with that is, just like if I were to give you a test in French, the results aren't going to tell me much, unless you know French. If I give a test to kindergarteners and they're having a hard time understanding the questions or navigating the technology, the results are going to be problematic. That was the case that I was making. Dr. Lathan, do you expect that in the forthcoming comprehensive technology plan, that beliefs that the district holds in what is appropriate for things like screen time and usage in, say, kindergarten, since that's what we're talking about here, will be outlined? Because I'm looking at the thing, you know, results here from 87 different educators, and they're varied, as Mrs. Brunner mentioned. Some people are saying, I would prefer not to have iPads, Chromebooks, or personal student devices in the classroom. Children get more than enough screen time at home and need to be playing and socializing in the kindergarten classroom. Even taking tests on computers as five- and six-year-olds is not developmentally appropriate and does not truly show what students know. Technology use in early childhood is not developmentally appropriate, and there's many more I could read, but do we expect that the district will communicate what we believe is appropriate in terms of usage of screen time in kindergarten in particular? And this is important for my vote. If I'm going to vote to, for $550,000 for devices that, that are being told aren't being used very often, it's important for me to know, since we don't have this comprehensive technology plan yet, do we expect that there will be commitments in that that'll lead us into next year where we take a stance on what's appropriate so that it's clarified across the board to what our expectations are?
So I want to go back to your first part of your question. You said the values and beliefs of the district. Are you saying that values and beliefs of the board? Are you asking for best practices as it relates to technology? Because I want to make sure we understand as the team is finalizing.
My understanding is that we're going to have a comprehensive technology plan put forth by the district and approved by the board, so it would be both. It would be approved by the board, but also put forth by the district, so it would be the, the beliefs of both the board and the district on what is appropriate for technology in this district. And what I'm asking specifically is would kindergarten Chromebook usage and screen time be a part of that? Would intentionality and commitment towards teaching keyboarding and operating systems at a cer, by a certain age be something that we can expect to be a part of that plan?
I won't make that commitment tonight until we have a draft of that plan to be able to speak to that. We don't have that plan yet, so for me to say, yes, you're going to have all those things, and then the team that's separately working on that, if the board has values and beliefs that they want to see incorporated or on top of that plan, I think the board should actually engage in a conversation around that, so that then I have that information that can be shared with the team.
We'll have to make a note to discuss that and do that. If that's what you're looking for, I think we probably should do that.
We've already given Dr. Lathan an instructive to provide us with a technology plan. Let's allow her to do that before we start.
That's what I'm asking. So this is the situation that I find myself in, is I struggle approving this without this commitment on what our beliefs are in usage of technology, and it's a timing issue, right? I mean, we're not going to get that until a few months, and I don't know what that is. So without that, I have a really hard time just unleashing one-to-one Chromebooks on our students again, for all the reasons that I've mentioned. Although I will say, it's very, very grateful to hear the information that you shared, Dr. Majors, about the availability of hard copied materials, which certainly makes me feel better about the way this vote may turn out. And I'm honestly still sitting here trying to make up my mind about this because I'm, I just feel like I'm without the information, without the commitments from the district that I think we should have before we, before we commit to this. Thank you.
I just want to be clear that the money spent on technology does not come from the same fund that we fund teachers and other support staff. Am I correct? I mean, at the end of the day, it's our general funds, but if you think about, I know it was said in reference to that money set aside, but when you factor in the position, the benefits entitled to that, you're not going to get 20, 30 positions that you think out of this amount of money. But at the end of the day, it comes into general, goes into our general funds. Okay. My next comment was regard to values. I would hope that the district's plan was based on best evidence-based practices that our experienced teachers and administrators can develop, and that we not have the board developing curriculum or curriculum plans based on our values, because, again, there's only two educators on this board, and we don't seem as a board to share values with regards to how to best educate our students. I think we would be putting our district at a, behind the eight ball and at a disservice if we were waiting for this board to come up with shared values about technology. I've read the research, just as many of you guys have read the research. I teach this research also, and the research on kindergarten use of technology is equivocal. There is research that demonstrates the benefits without necessarily talking about the, with the benefits of using technology with young children and how it can enhance their learning. There is also research that talks about how excessive technology use in young children does impact their behavior and brain, brain functioning, et cetera, but this is not an either-or, and we try to, we often make these dichotomies of you can only have one or the other, and I just don't believe that. Again, as an educator and based on the research and my experience, we can have both, and both can be beneficial for the classroom, both can be beneficial to students and teachers. Also, best practices these days is not developmentally appropriate for kindergartners to have homework, so there's that. Can I just point out, if you go back, though, and Board Member Byrne, you asked some questions, back to the February 2023 presentation from the Technology Integration Committee, it has some of that information, because that was the first step in this process, going back to Board Member Hani Kani, that we started talking about technology. So in '21, '22, leading into that, there was discussions about bringing together a district-wide technology committee. We brought a committee together, principals, teachers, and district staff. So that integration committee presented a plan. That's when we also brought last year's recommendation around technology. And so it outlined screen time. It outlined what our current technology state was, and then it had also the committee recommendation. So that information was shared initially back in February of 2023, and we had, like I said, and we sent out a survey. At that time, 555 K-12 teachers participated in that survey last year. And the technology usage guidelines, on page 13 of that presentation that is a public document, shows 20% of the school day for elementary technology usage and 30% of the school day for secondary usage. And then we broke that down as we continued around the ISTI, if I'm saying ISTI correctly, Ruth, the standards as it relates to those, as we continue to finalize that technology plan. And if I go back and recall to the board, we shared we would bring that to you in June, based on the information that was presented to you in August of '23.
Well, it's evident to me at this point that we've had a lot of questions, received a lot of answers, and a great deal of discussion, so I call for the question.
Okay, there's been a motion to call for the question, and the motion that's presently on the table is the motion to remove the kindergarten purchase of the Chromebooks for a separate vote. A motion to call the question requires a two-thirds vote, which means five members would have to vote in favor of Ms. Brunner's motion. I think it does also require second. So there's been a motion to call the question or close the debate, and it does require second. Is there a second to Ms. Brunner's?
A second.
Second by Board Member Thomas Tate. At this time, we will take a vote on the motion to close the debate or call the question. A vote in favor means that we will immediately move to vote on Kelly Byrne's motion to remove the kindergarten purchase. A vote opposed means that we'll still continue to have discussion on this matter. Are there any questions about the vote itself?
Point of clarification.
Yeah.
With regards to taking it off of the vote, the kindergartners out of the vote, will we then have a secondary vote for the kindergartners?
So yes, if Board Member Byrne's motion passes, then we will take two votes after that. One vote will be on the touchscreen Chromebooks for first through ninth grade, and the second will be on the kindergarten Chromebooks.
At this point, we're going to vote to stop the discussion or not?
On.
Got it.
On Board Member Byrne's motion to remove the kindergarten Chromebooks.
But that's acknowledging that not every member had an opportunity for a second.
You are correct, which is why it requires a two-thirds majority. So at this time, there's been a motion to call the question or close the debate. The motion is from Board Member Brunner, second by Board Member Thomas Tate. Again, a motion in favor means we'll immediately move to the vote on the motion to remove the kindergarten purchase for a separate vote. Any questions about what we're voting on? Clear as mud. Okay, we'll start. We'll take a verbal vote, and this is, again, is on the motion to close the debate or call, call the question.
No?
Okay.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. The motion to close the debate or call the question passes. We'll now move on to the motion, Board Member Byrne's motion to remove the purchase of the touchscreen Chromebooks for kindergarteners and have it in a separate vote. A vote in favor of this motion means that we will then move into two different votes, one on the touchscreen Chromebooks for first through ninth grade, and one on the touchscreen Chromebooks for kindergarteners. A vote no means that we will take a vote all in one lump sum, which is for kindergarten through ninth grade. Is there any question about what we're voting on?
Okay, so no means it's all together.
Correct.
Got it.
Yes means we'll separate.
She got that in there.
Pardon?
Tammy got it in there.
She is really.
She's good.
Okay, so we will take a vote on here. Again, a vote in favor means we'll take two separate votes. A vote opposed means we will take one vote. Thank you, Tammy.
It's not going to let me pull it up, but it's three aye, four nay.
Okay, three aye. Okay, so Board Member Byrne's motion to remove the kindergarten purchase fails. We are now at our original motion.
Does the result, the individual results of that vote? Does the result, the individual results of that vote become public?
The results of the individual vote, yes, will become public when we issue our meeting minutes. Correct? Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I want to take this opportunity, because it's up for a second discussion now.
The original. You are correct. You'll give me just a moment to... Okay, there was the recommended action that the board approved the technology purchase as presented. That was... Tammy, that was motion in second grade. Perfect, and to my knowledge, we haven't had any, or we had limited discussion on that, which is when you made that motion, your second motion. Did you want to make any other comments before we move to another board member's comments?
I think I made my initial comments, and then it ended with a motion, so...
That's correct.
We're still on initial comments for everyone else, and then I guess I'll have a second opportunity if I need to.
Yep, okay. Board Member Mohammed Connie?
Yes, I had a question, but I want to preface that with, I don't believe I've ever heard anyone on this board suggest that we are interested in, in picking curriculum, but the fact is that, at the end of the day, educator or not, everything comes to the board for approval, and that includes the curriculum. So that's the hat we all wear. But I do have a clarification question. When the idea of homework was brought up, my understanding, and this is an area of concern for me, is not pertaining to kindergarten. Right now, the district has a no homework stance across the board, elementary and even in middle school. Or is it K-5?
And Board Member Mohammed Connie, just as a reminder, the motion is that the board approved the technology purchases as presented, so the discussion needs to relate to that motion. If you've got questions related to something outside of that motion, we can discuss them later.
Well, now that we are voting on all of the technology, that includes kindergarten through eighth grade, because the break, this is not for high schoolers, we have the breakdown, and this is pertinent, and I think it's my prerogative to decide what questions are pertinent to my decision.
I'm just making sure that's where the line of questioning is going.
Well, this is in a courtroom.
You're correct, but we are also in a board meeting, so I'm making sure that we're staying on task and on topic.
The topic and the task is what I choose as one board member.
It's actually not. We approve the agenda as a board.
It pertains to how I make my decision.
And if that's why you're asking a question, I'm saying that's okay, but I don't want to deviate into just whatever you want to discuss.
I don't feel like I should have to explain why I'm asking. It's the same thing that I asked for the kindergartners, which is the ability for students to have printed material to take home, so that their guardians and their grandparents or parents, whomever is at home, can engage with them.
I'm sorry, was that a question?
Yes. So the question just expanded from K into elementary.
What was the question?
What is the question?
The ability to have printed material to go home in the form of books or workbooks.
I'm still not understanding what you're, you just keep saying the, are you asking if the district has the availability?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Given the 2.3, what's the amount here, $2.38 million purchase, well, we still have funds to provide books and workbooks for the students that are now elementary to go home to do homework, or to have their parents help them.
Homework is decided at the teacher level? I just want to make sure we understand what you're asking us.
Funds, I just want to ensure that we have the funds to have those materials.
So based on the selection of the materials that the teacher selects for students, as it relates to homework, so that ties back to that curriculum and the resources that are needed, but we, those resources are provided, but the teacher decides on homework. I just want to make sure, we don't make a blanket statement across the district saying, this is the homework that will go home, and I just want to make sure that's not what you're asking me.
So here's my, here's the conundrum. Technology in K-5 or K-8 is not going home, so I'm just concerned that if, if I don't approve for devices for the students, but they can go home if their parent asks for it, but if they don't have devices, then, and, and we don't have print material, then there's not, I just want to ensure that our teachers have access to the sorts of resources that they want, or that the students and the families are provided with the resources they need.
We are providing the resources based on what our curriculum calls for, so that, once again, that's a teacher decision. I mean, you, I'm answering it to the best of my abilities of, when a teacher decides on what the homework is for their class, they make that decision. If it's handouts that they need to go make copies of, they, they take care of that. I don't, I'm not sure what else you're asking me.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from board members at this time?
I will just state that, from the parents and teachers, parents and families that I have access to, and the kids that I see in K through fifth grade, teachers send home lots of handouts and worksheets that they can work on. They are related to the curriculum, they are offered to families for weekend work, for holiday work, for after-school work, there's lots of homework packets that go home to kids. They aren't required in the traditional way of churning them in, but a lot of the teachers that I have encountered have those, those worksheets available to them, and oftentimes we just make our own.
Are there other board members' comments or questions?
I'll take my second if no one else has a first.
Anybody else want to speak? Nope, okay. Board Member Byrne?
I think I know what you're asking, Dr. Mohammed Connie. It's teacher's discretion if they're going to give homework, I think that's always the case, that different teachers decide to do that in different ways, and you want to clarify that by approving this expenditure, that there are still resources available, that the teachers that do choose to send homework home, that they have the resources that they need to do so, since the Chromebooks can't go home. Is that fair?
Well said.
Okay. I think that's a simple question, and I, it sounds to me like I think the answer is, I think she just wants to hear it. Like, is the answer yes, we are going to be able to give the resources to our teachers that they need to send things home if and when they need it, at their discretion?
I think that's been answered as yes. Am I incorrect?
Has that been answered as yes?
Okay.
So now that we're voting on both of these together, this leaves me in a predicament, because I don't, I'm very conflicted about the kindergarten Chromebooks, yet I do acknowledge that we need these, and the rest of the grades, and teachers need what they need to do their job with the resources, the curriculum resources, and the testing that we require them to do, and all of that. I suppose I'm left to abstain, and I would like to clarify that had I been able to vote separately on first through ninth grade, I would have passed those without questioning it. I'm hung up on the kindergarten portion, and I'm hung up in particular, just because of a timing issue, because I'm really excited to see what commitments we're going to come forth with in the comprehensive technology plan, which we don't have yet, which I understand why we don't have yet, we just don't have it, and that leaves, leaves me in a tough decision on this, so I plan to abstain for those reasons. And it's abstained due to lack of information, being that the comprehensive technology plan has not been given to us yet.
Any further questions or comments from board members?
Just like to make a quick comment. It's my understanding that previously, when assessments were done by pen and paper, the teachers then had to go and input those assessments, so that then we could get data back. I don't know if that's something that could be affirmed by, if that's a correct statement or understanding historically.
Yes, it was a historical song.
Okay, okay. I support the responsible use of technology, and I appreciate Dr. Lathan's commitment to move away from the overuse of technology. The testing that we do at a higher, higher education level, as our students, you know, enter middle school, enter high school, take the ACT, take the SAT, those are done on a technology device, and I think we need to replicate the real world. As a business owner, my employees all have a desk, or a computer at their desk, and I think that that is not going to go away anytime soon. When I think about all the tests that I took throughout my education career, I always tried to replicate the actual testing day, even down to sitting in the same room in which I was going to be testing, and I don't think this is any diff- different. We've got to replicate what our, what our, our students are going to see. Last year, this board had questions about whether or not our teachers wanted the Chromebooks for the kindergartners, and overwhelmingly, the teachers said, yes, we, we need these Chromebooks, we need them on a one-to-one basis, and this board as a whole decided that that wasn't enough. This year, we asked them again, and they overwhelmingly said, yes, we need these Chromebooks at the kindergarten level, and I'm hoping that after we sat here two weeks ago and listened to the teachers who gave up their time in the evening to come and, and share with us, and we sat here and expressed our thanks to them, and that how much we would want to defer to them, because they're the people who are in the classrooms, I'm hoping that this board will actually do that and respect the professional opinion of the teachers who are in our classroom. So for that reason, I will be voting in favor of the technology purchase this evening. Any further comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, the recommended action is that the board approve the technology purchases as presented. We will now take a vote. The motion that the board approve the technology purchases as presented passes, six in favor and one abstention. Moving on to item 9.02, Board Policy Adoptions and Revisions. Along with the other items in unfinished business, the board received this information two weeks ago and has had questions, or ability to answer questions, ask questions during that time. The recommended action is that the board approve the policies as presented or amended. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Board Member Thomas Tate. Do I have a second? Second from Board Member Kreis. Is there any discussion on this matter? Seeing none?
Might I call for a break?
You have a discussion on this matter, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, let's take a five-minute break, that's fine.
Thank you.
Hello?
Oh, hello, there I am. And there, there has, board members, just so you're, you are aware, there has been a request by some members of the audience that we speak up and speak clearly, so all of our members of the public who have joined us this evening can hear what the board is saying, so I'm just passing along that request. We've got item 9.02, Board Policy Adoptions and Revisions. There has been a motion that the board approve the policies as presented or amended, and a second. Board Member Mohammed Connie, you had the floor when we took our break.
I had asked for this item to be separated out of consent, because I wanted to take a few minutes to talk about a policy. Is this on? You can hear me? I have to speak right in it? Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Big difference. Okay, so I had asked for this item to be separated out, because I wanted to take a few minutes to talk about a policy that had its first read in our study session, but then is not coming to us for adoption, and that is specifically Policy JG Discipline and the document that's connected to it, titled JGR1, and those were both in our packets. And I'm now hearing that I should reserve my comments. I'm going to go ahead and, and make them, because I don't think that it would in any way jeopardize the board's position on this. It would perhaps encourage us to go in the direction that I would like to see us go. It's very clear to all of us that discipline is indeed a bear, and it's posing some serious challenges in our learning environments, and as I alluded to in the last board meeting, and I think I detailed it out, that the Springfield Board, our board, those that served before us, broke away from adopting a set of discipline standards at the board level, that our neighboring districts all adopted, following the Missouri School Board Association recommendations and all the iterations throughout the years. Discipline is a challenge everywhere, but it's, it's particularly gruesome here, and I understand that our legal counsel prefers that our scope and sequence remain an administrative function and within, and live within the handbook, and that there's no legal requirement for us to outline a detailed scope and sequence, I get that. But I, I want to take this opportunity to speak with my esteemed colleagues here. So we're told, or the understanding is that our scope and sequence, or our handbook, has been reviewed and adjusted by committees of teachers and leaders twice in the last four years, and that it's, appears when you look at it to be more extensive than what's outlined in the MSBA policy that's coming to us. I'm not sure that I entirely agree with that assessment. So I don't know if you guys recall, but Dr. Lathan allowed me to attend the last set of committee meetings that had to do with discipline, and I can attest that the teachers and principals were not consistently present, because they had building obligations, and individuals from other groups were consistently represented. And although the process was very well laid out and very well-intentioned, in my opinion, it didn't have the effective results that I would have expected, because the committee task was not open-ended, the data wasn't mined properly, and most importantly, the research was pre-selected, I presume to drive a certain narrative. Following our board norms, I had shared these observations and concerns with Dr. Lathan at the time, and not with you all at this table, but I do think it's relevant that you hear this from me today. I get that we have, in our student handbook, we have more codes than the MSBA policy, but at the end of the day, they don't seem to be working, I suspect because they're not consistently enforced, which is something else I learned as a bystander in these meetings. I, I, so we're being told that legal counsel stresses that this would put the district...
Board Member Mohammed Connie, I am just going to advise you and remind you of your responsibility to the board and to executive session before you continue to speak.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I look at our handbook right now that we have, and I see that no matter how many times a student uses profanity toward a teacher, or any person in authority in high school, or no matter how many times they vandalize or destroy school property, they could, at the end of the day, potentially still receive detention, no matter how many times. And I, I think that we should be concerned about the safety risk for our students and staff, and I'm disappointed that we've not been party to said legal conversations, but what I do really want to urge the board tonight to acknowledge is the current Policy JG that we have is incorrect, because it references a non-existent document, namely JGR1, and it states that the Board of Education has created a discipline code of conduct that addresses the consequences, I'm reading this right out of it, "for students whose conduct is prejudicial to good order and discipline." And so in my, as I read this, I don't think this is correct, because this board has not considered or created the discipline code. It, it currently remains an administrative function. But I'm also wondering if it was important to the boards that came before us, so like 10 years ago, to do this and adopt this language, which somehow has survived all these iterations, should we not consider the wisdom that they had and consider it now? I'm also bewildered, because every MSBA policy that's ever come to us has been adopted by this board, but here we have the most critical of all policies, and we're choosing, or the board leadership is choosing to remain unengaged. And I think by just choosing to not even consider adopting it, or see it as an opportunity to have a discussion from a policy perspective, that we're opting to ignore it, which leaves the district to, to shoulder the burden, rather than supporting the district with effective policy and with leadership. And I know that this would entail a difficult dialogue at the board table, but I think it would be really constructive, it would show our staff that we are committed to providing the supports they need at the board level. I'm only talking at the board level, which is by way of policy, right, to ensure that we have safe and disciplined learning environments that are necessary for teaching and learning. And I think that it is our job to lead the effort to restore rules and order, and, you know, as just one member of this body, I'm tired of the excuses. I think that avoiding this policy shows, and these are strong, and I, you know, I think it, it shows a lack of courage, and it shows that there's a dearth of leadership at this very important, I'd say, critical juncture, and all we're going to do is leave our staff and our students in the lurch, and I'm just personally very disappointed. So I hope that this board, I ask that this board consider this policy in the next meeting. JG and JGR1.
Thank you, Board Member Mohammed Connie. Are there any other further comments or questions? Are there any other further comments or questions? And I'll just make note, Board Member Mohammed Kani notified me approximately 10 minutes ago of her request to talk about JG and that if it wasn't going to happen now, it was going to happen during board comments. So I did allow quite a bit of latitude since this has not been presented to us for approval this evening. I think all board members have also received an email earlier this afternoon with regard to JG and JGR1. Are there any further comments or questions before we vote on the approval of the policies as presented or amended?
I would like to just make a comment that yes, this board has, in our history, approved policies from MSBA. However, we have altered some of them. And also, there is language on all of those ones, not all, some of them, that state that it is at the discretion of the board to approve or not to approve, and that it is also recommended to seek legal counsel. In this particular case, that is what we've done.
I'd like to add that if there is inconsistencies in our policies, it's referencing something that does not exist or was never passed. If one policy references another policy that does not exist, that I ask for a recommendation on how we can clear that up, please?
Absolutely.
At a future meeting. If it is not resolved by what Dr. Mary Mohammed Kani is asking, then some other method.
Absolutely. And Board Member Mohammed Kani and I spoke during the break, and I asked that she bring that up at a later date since it wasn't currently on the agenda for this evening, which was made aware of all, by all board members more than a week ago.
I discussed it two weeks ago. This very comment that I made was discussed two weeks ago.
Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, we will vote. The recommended action is that the board approve the policies as presented or amended. The motion was Dr. Thomas Tate, second by Board Member Kreis. The motion that the board approve the policies as presented or amended passes seven, nothing. Moving on to item 9.03, along with the other unfinished business items, this item was brought before us at our February 13th Board of Education Study Session. The board's had an opportunity to ask questions and get additional information during the last two weeks. The recommended action is that the board approve the student nutrition management expenditures as presented. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I'll move.
Second.
Motion from Board Member Kreis, second from Board Member Thomas Tate. Is there any further discussion on this matter?
You know it.
All right. Board Member Byrne.
Do you have the motion language that I emailed? Which I, I don't have to do it right now, but I need, I have some comments first.
I did not print it.
So we've been with Airmark since 1991, is my understanding. That's quite some time, and we've had a great relationship, as I understand it. This is the last extension of our contract with them, and then this time next year, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, we will be entering into a new contract with them or someone at that point, correct?
We still have one more extension available.
Oh, okay, one more. Ah, even better, more time, okay. What I would like to request is, since we've been with this company since 1991, and as we're going into a time period where we will be just assessing, reassessing, which sounds like in 24 months, not in 12 months, as I expected, I think it would be responsible of us to do a little bit of research and find out what other districts are doing that is successful in terms of providing the best quality nutrition that we can for our students. And in particular, what I had pointed out in the last meeting was, as an example, was the sugar content in breakfast items. Now, this isn't to say that Airmark is doing a poor job on the whole. I don't, I don't know. All I'm saying is that in two years, or we have two years to consider potentially be in a situation where we can rebid, examine other options. Other options could include, it could include Airmark, it could include some other company that offers the same services, it could include us taking it in-house. And as we have this time, rather than to wait until last minute, what I would like to ask for is just a little more due diligence, since we've been with this company so long, to ask ourselves, how are we doing? Can we do better? And maybe the answer is no at the end. I don't know. But I think it would be very reasonable for us to do some sort of study that looks at other districts of similar sizes, and maybe not necessarily even restricted to Missouri. I don't think there's any reason to do that for nutrition services. I think there's a lot of examples out there that we can look at to see what other schools are doing to just, just do the best they can to provide good solid nutrition to their students. When I look at options for breakfast in particular, that can have a student eating, you know, a honey bun, craisins, and chocolate milk for breakfast, I ask myself, can we do better than that? And if the answer is maybe, then I guess I would just urge the rest of the board to allow or to ask that over the next 24 months, I was going to say 12, but it sounds like we have more time than that, that we, that we do a study slash audit, whatever that may be, to look into how we are performing the services now and also what other examples are out there of successful districts that have maybe, look at a district that's taken it in-house and has successful, or has had success, and look at a district that has used some of Airmark's competitors, et cetera, so that we can be informed to make those decisions. And at the end of the day, if nothing else, we're at least providing pressure on our current provider to just continually improve and do the best they can rather than be complacent with a contract that's essentially been renewed since 1991. So the motion I'd like to make is, I motion that the board authorize and direct Dr. Lathan to solicit options for a third-party study and audit of our nutrition services program. The intent of the study slash audit would be to look at the current situation of our programs, business practices, as well as its ability to provide high-quality nutrition to our students. This study slash audit should also explore methods that other districts have utilized to optimize nutrition for students with intent to guide our decision process for either renewing a contract with our current provider in 2026 or seeking alternative options. A recommendation to engage in such study or audit should be brought back to the board for approval, allowing enough time for the study or audit to take place and the results be presented to the board well in advance of the 2026 decision to engage in a new contract with a nutrition services provider.
Okay, there has been a motion from Board Member Byrne that the Board of Education authorizes and directs our superintendent to solicit options to audit for nutrition Motion from Board Member Byrne, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, second from Board Member McCosky. And a lot of this information was given to the board today, so I'm going to allow Dr. Lathan to speak about the current audit process before we go into a discussion.
Thank you. Information based on the question from Board Member Byrne this morning was sent to the board. So we actually have already participated in two audits this year, one by Child and Adult Care Food Program, that's from the federal level, and also the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services. So we're waiting to receive the findings of those two audits. Also, at the end of March, DESI will come out and perform a full audit of the district. That means going out to various campuses, and so they'll be digging into and looking at the various, our implementation of our nutrition services program. And so that is part of what occurs. And actually, I believe the last time was 2017 or 2019, and it stopped during COVID. So they're back up now going out and conducting those. So my question would be, do we want to spend those dollars to have something that we already are waiting on two reports to come back, and then a third will be coming from DESI?
So to answer the question, what I'm requesting is to, I guess, a RFP, it would be to solicit proposals, so it wouldn't be to spend, because I think I would like for that information to come back in front of the board and say, hey, we found this company or that company that offer these sorts of services, and this is the price we're talking about. If they come back, it's a million dollars, I think this board will say no.
Board Member Byrne, may I make a suggestion? If you're willing to withdraw your motion and perhaps get more information about what the audit currently provides versus what you want, and then come back to the board with a more refined motion?
No, because, because what I'm asking for is different based on what you just said, Dr. Lathan. What you just, you said we have some audits from DESI, and then you mentioned two other institutions that were both federal government institutions, correct?
One is federal and one is state. They've already conducted their audits, and we're waiting on the findings from those two. And like I said, DESI will be here at the end of March, so right after spring break, they'll come out and perform another audit.
Okay. So what I'm seeking is a third-party consultant company-type deal, if it exists out there. Seek them, find them, and ask for proposals. I'm not asking to commit to anything, I'm not asking for any money spent. I'm asking for a search for those things that is not a federal or state governing body to help advise us, in the same way that we're using Field Trip for our branding efforts that was in our K-COP today. Something similar to that, where we can have professionals that have a lot of information come back and help guide us through a process as we reach a decision point.
And as I put in my email to you today, the board is given an opportunity to select what audits the board wants to have an independent auditor complete. Every year, the board meets with Forvis to decide what audits the board wants. In the past, we've done an HR audit, we did an audit on launch. I'm going to again ask that you withdraw your motion.
And I'm going to again refuse. The audit is different than what I'm asking for. I'm not asking for an accounting audit, I'm not necessarily asking for a best practices audit, I'm not asking for something that simply says, are we operating under, effectively under the restrictions of the federal government? I'm asking for a study to be done on how we can optimize and maximize the nutrition that we provide for our students, and I see it as starkly in contrast to the audit that, say, Forvis would do.
Okay. So there's been a motion from Board Member Byrne that the board authorize and direct Dr. Lathan to solicit options for third-party study and audit of our nutrition services program. The second was made by Board Member McCosky. Is there further discussion on this?
I do have further discussion. I'm not opposed to us having nutritious food. I do think that Airmark does a good job, and I've worked with them to provide meals for kids over the summertime, and they are very conscious about the kinds of food that they're providing for us. That said, I'm not opposed to us considering other options, but I do think that we do go through that process. I've been here on this board long enough to have witnessed that opportunity for us to select other options, and Airmark has come out as the best option for us. I understand your request, and I don't like the language of your motion because it is asking for an audit, but you're not able to clarify what you mean by audit. I do agree that if you want to have something done, an RFP, a request for proposals, may be a more appropriate approach than an audit because we have these audits being done. Now, I understand that you're talking about perhaps a consultant. That language is not tied to what you've requested in the motion, and so I would recommend that you change the language of your motion if you want to get support.
I can certainly do that. I shared with the board earlier my reason for adding the term audit, and if we want to leave that separate to these other things that you're talking about, I'm happy to simplify this into just a study, or what was the other term you used?
Even a study. The study is kind of a nebulous kind of word, and it doesn't really specify or clarify what it is that you're wanting, and I would not be, I would not be, I would not vote for it without understanding what it is that you're asking for in something that is actually reasonable. I don't think what you're asking for as a study and an audit are reasonable. I do think an RFP is reasonable, and I will be open to that, but those other parts, I think, are unclear and way too abstract with the way that you're discussing them at this point.
Well, the RFP would be seeking, seeking a consultant who could study and advise on nutrition services. That's what I'm getting at, is that...
I was thinking you were asking just for food services contractors, vendors, to put in proposals.
No, 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 no. I'm asking for a third-party organization to, just like I said, Field Trip is advising on branding, this would be a company who specializes in this sort of things. I doubt there's one in Springfield, maybe a national company, I don't know. Maybe they don't exist, I don't know. But a third-party consultant who could study what other districts do and help guide us in the right direction of this decision-making with the ultimate goal of providing the most nutritious meals and maximizing our nutrition program as possible.
I, again, I'm not opposed to part of what you're saying, I just think that if you want to get the support that you need, I think that you should withdraw this proposal and re-submit it with more cogent language that specifies exactly what it is that you want, because I don't disagree with what you're saying. But when you put it in this motion, it doesn't work for me, and I would vote no.
You're trying to jump in, would you allow me to withdraw and restate?
You're going to withdraw and restate? That would be fine. I am asking you, please, to perhaps come back at a different date with this proposal. I also do not disagree with what you're saying. I think we need to spend more time crafting it before we have this discussion.
But all I'm asking for is seeking proposals.
Okay.
I'm not asking for a contract or a commitment.
Go ahead and restate.
I motion that Dr. Lathan seek proposals from third-party consultants to perform a study and assessment or feasibility report of how our nutrition system is operating currently, which would include studying other districts in an effort to determine best decisions moving forward with our nutrition services contract.
What was the last part?
Best, best practices moving forward with our nutrition services contract.
Board Member Byrne has made a motion that Dr. Lathan seek proposals from third-party consultants to perform a study and assessment or feasibility report of how our nutrition system is operating, including reviewing other districts in an effort to determine best practices moving forward with nutrition services contracts. Is there a second at this time? Seeing none, the motion fails.
Seconded it.
Okay, we have a second from Board Member Mohammed Kani.
So did the last motion get retracted?
He essentially withdrew it, yes.
I didn't hear that happening, okay.
Am I incorrect in that?
That's correct.
Okay. So there's been a motion from Board Member Byrne, and there's been a second from Board Member Mohammed Kani. Is there any further discussion on the proposed motion, or on the pending motion, rather?
May I? Dr. Lathan, these two, I am speaking in my mic, I have to literally pick it up. This is, Dr. Lathan, do you know the scope, now it's too loud, of those audits, and when do you think those results will be available? What did they audit?
Cam, would you come up and share, please?
Okay. And just so I'm clear, this is which ones? It's not DESI, it's the human...
DESI's coming, so that she can share the scope of the three different audits, the three different organizations.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
The two, you can share the scope of the two, yes.
So we have, we just finished the CACFP audit, which looks at early childhood...
That is again, CA?
CACFP, Child and Adult Care Food Program. So that looks at our after-school feeding, so dinners, super snacks, those kinds of things, early childhood, and babies that we have at Studi as well. things, early childhood and babies that we have at Studi as well.
So not like breakfast, lunch?
No.
Okay, got it.
And also summer school. They look at our SFSP, Summer Food Service Program. That's all under Department of Health and Senior Services and we just finished that audit. We should be getting the results back very soon.
That was the first audit or the second audit?
That's the first audit.
Okay.
The second audit is DESI. We've already been turning things in for DESI into their portal. They'll be coming the 25th through the 29th and doing an onsite audit as well. So they'll have six members of their DESI team actually in Springfield schools for six days, five days.
So what are they auditing from the questions they're asking you? I'm curious.
May I? Yes.
You know, just an overall, general?
Everything. So they'll look at everything from what we're serving, nutritionals, what's in vending It's everything. So this kind of goes over all of it that I provided, that I provided for you guys and look at it. I mean, there's eight pages. So it goes over professional standards, like all the training that we go through, that we have for our office and all the people out in the schools, food safety, smart snacks, local school wellness policy, onsite monitoring, the fresh fruit and vegetable program, after-school snacks, which is a different one than the CACFP has, civil rights, resource management, meal components and quantities, meal counting and claiming verification, certification and benefit issuance. So it goes over all of our free and reduced, all of our verification processes. It's top to bottom.
Okay, so two different ones, the DESI one and then the other federal--
The CAFP.
Okay.
So Kim, do you mind, Ms. Keller, also speaking? You mentioned that as it relates to staying with your list, you talked about the verification process. So they also audit how we record, the number of meals served, the--
All of our claiming, everything.
All the claims, correct?
All the claims, yes. That's correct.
And there is a process that we're required and a procedure is the way to do claims, correct?
There is, yes, exactly.
Thank you.
So we do have two people in our office that are district employees that help do monitoring, so they monitor the Airmark side.
Okay.
So that it's not the Airmark doing their own monitoring, if that makes sense. All right? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so--
Yes, thank you.
I think you, Kim.
Well, I agree with Mr. Byrne that I think we can certainly do better on this front. Our mission is committed to the well-being of students by providing high-quality academic opportunities, but I think we all agree that we also deeply care about our students' well-being in general. This is another area, as with all areas in our schools, I think it's incumbent upon us to provide them what they need, in this case nutritionally, rather than what they want. So this is in general been my position on everything related to the children in our district. And what they need, so I'm going to put my doctorate on here, so what they need to grow and develop and learn are nutritious balanced meals that do include, contrary to what people might think, it includes healthy fats because it's important for neuronal development. So I would like, and I don't know if these audits would address what I would like to see, and Mr. Byrne, so help me clarify, I want to see us decrease the amount of processed food and simple sugars that we serve our students and the sorts of fats we provide them, not just to help them thrive today, you know, now while they're in our care, but really to help them develop those healthy dietary habits that will serve them for the rest of their lives. Will the, what I heard from, so in answer to my question, I'm not sure that the audits that have occurred and the one that's coming, because that's all about after-school lunch, you know, not breakfast and not during the school day. And then the DESI, the list you read off, I'm not sure that it would address the sorts of things. Am I understanding that you have the concerns that I have with processed food, sugar and all that? I'm not sure it would address that, would it?
It goes over all the nutritionals. It'll analyze all of our menus. Yeah, we have to turn in all of our menus and then make sure that we're complying on all the--
And the last time this was done by DESI was?
We're due in 2020.
In our--
2020 and that's what COVID has, so they--
And are our practices substantially different than 2017?
Practice as far as--
The sorts of food, the quantity of processed food, sugars, fats, all that jazz?
No, not really. They really haven't changed a whole lot since 2017. 2010 was when we had the big change with all the nutritional, the new things on the whole grains and--
So would it be fair to say that we're doing things pretty much the same and we passed the DESI audit before, so we're going to pass the DESI audit now?
I would, yes, I would say we'll definitely pass the DESI audit. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't pass the DESI audit, so yeah.
So this helps me understand that the sort of audit they're doing is not going to be addressing the sorts of concerns that I'm hearing from Mr. Byrne.
I think that's fair and I'll speak when you're done.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further Board Member comments or questions at this time?
Okay, I do. Okay, sorry. So you want us to seek proposals, but we don't know the true scope of the proposal and we, I guess we won't know the cost of it and they'll bring the RFP back to us or the, not the RFP, but they'll bring the proposals back to us once they get them back. But you want to look through the RFP because we need to know the scope of work. I would think we would need to know that, that we're getting what you want and what this board wants. Not just what Kelly wants, what this board wants. And what are your thoughts on giving input to that RFP or the scope of work for that RFP or else we're going to get something that may not be of any value?
The scope of work can be further clarified. I mean, I'm happy to do that, but what I think the scope of work would be is to seek a consultant that can advise how we can optimize nutrition. I mean, I think that's, I don't know how to say that any better and that seems pretty simple to me. And, you know, I understand that we might be meeting the standards of DESI or the USDA, but that's not what I'm asking for. What I'm asking for is what are other districts doing? Are they doing something different where they're just exceeding those minimum requirements? What are the things that, we've been doing the same thing since 1991. What other options are there?
And I know we've been doing some back and forth, but let's, Scott, this is your time, so the motion has been made. Is there any further comment that you have?
I'd just like to know what the full scope is before we go seeking these proposals so we get what this board wants and we're not wasting staff, Dr. Lathan and her staff's time getting around out and seeking these proposals to get something back that we don't, that's not of any value.
I don't think there's anybody sitting up here that doesn't want the healthiest choices possible for all the kids. That's just the way it is. And we've probably all, whether in the role of parent or teacher or whatever, have seen kids throw away very good food in a cafeteria that was served to them, but they chose not to eat it and they want, they preferred something differently. I, you know, we'll have a fair amount of students that bring in their lunches in a lunchbox. We don't monitor that. We will have a fair amount of parents that bring in fast food at lunch into the cafeteria so, or grandparents, so that they can sit and eat with their children. We don't monitor that as long as it's coming in by a parent or a guardian. Sometimes they have a special place they sit, but that's, that has nothing to do with what's in the food container. What's being served, what students are actually eating while they are on our campus is not happening in isolation. There are a lot of other things that are going on in terms of what they might be eating, whether it's what they brought in from home or whatever. I will say that one of the more difficult days in an elementary educator's life is the day after Halloween when everybody's had a lot of candy the night before. So, you know, sometimes you can say, well, if Halloween would just be on a Friday, then they can detox the sugar by Monday. I don't mean to make light of it, but that, I mean, that's the reality. So everybody wants something healthy for the children. We have governmental guidelines that go with that. I, again, I'm not going to minimize what people are trying to accomplish sitting up here by looking at all of this with a rather comprehensive look, but I'm of the position right now, based on what I'm hearing and the information that we're, that we've been given, we have some audits in place. Let's look and see what kind of information comes back from that before we push on and ask for a different type of audit. Let's see what we actually have. And we have that readily available in the next few months, correct, Dr. Lathan?
Yes.
Okay. So for me, at this point, I think we need to assess what it is that will, the information that will come in. I think we all agree, we want the lunches to be healthy and I think that includes Airmark or any food service provider that we might have. I will say that my guess would be, and I'm not basing this on anything but a guess, that to go back to start and start preparing the food from scratch would be an expense we couldn't afford. And it's, I'm not saying that we make the decisions on what they eat based on money alone, but I think it's a consideration. I think to have enough people to actually start cooking things from scratch, maybe like in the good old days, if you thought they were that great, I'm not sure we could afford it if we wanted it.
Any further comments?
Am I allowed a second round? Thirty seconds?
Sure, so I'll go first and then we'll go back in the order that we went beforehand unless Board Member McCoskey had anything to say, but I don't think he does. Okay. I don't-- What? Okay. Just like Board Member Brunner, I don't disagree with any statements that have been made up here, especially though with a contract that's been in place since 1991. I think we should do a comparison of what Airmark looks like. I have no idea if, how it compares to other nutrition services, but I'm also not inclined to spend district funds when there are audits already being conducted. And in addition, every year, we ask Forvis to complete two audits and for those of us who have been through that process before, it's not as though Forvis just writes down and says, okay, we're going to do, you know, X, Y, and Z. They take time to sit down with each individual board member and what are we looking for out of the audit and then they craft the audit so that we get the information that we're needed, that we need and want. That's in the budget. And so I'm not saying that your idea is a bad one. I think it's an excellent idea. I just don't think now is the time or place to ask for an additional review. So we'll go back down if there's any other Board Member comments.
So when is this DESI audit due back?
Hasn't happened.
It's going to be conducted the 25th through the 29th. I'm not sure what their timeline is. I'm sure I haven't covered it in a month.
DESI can turn something around in a month?
Yeah.
Wow. It can be done. So to answer some of the things that were raised, yes, Dr. Mohammed Kani, the DESI, what I'm hearing from DESI is not what I'm looking for because that audit, and I'm looking forward to seeing that audit, but that audit is making sure that we are complying with state standards. The other audit was federal standards. And what I'm saying is, and in particular, I'm just focusing on breakfast here because it's a good example. If we passed our audit in 2017, then we are in compliance with state standards and state standards allow us to serve Lucky Charms, Cinnamon Toast Crunch, honey buns, cinnamon rolls, donuts, chocolate milk, amongst other things. Those are regular staples, okay, that kids have every single morning. Then I'm saying the state standards aren't good enough and I'm saying we can do better than that. And if you acknowledge the effects of sugar on kids by Halloween candy, then what do you think a honey bun and chocolate milk does to start the day? It causes problems. So all I'm asking for is a RFP. I'm not asking to spend money. I'm asking for, let's look what's out there. Is there a company out there that can consult with us to look at what else is available to help us not just meet the state and federal government requirements, to help us exceed it, to do the best we can for our students? I don't want to police what's in lunchboxes. I don't care what kids eat at home. I don't care what parents decide to send with their students to school. That's their choice. But if a parent chooses to have their child participate in the lunches that we provide, that obligation is now on us to do the best of our ability to give them a healthy meal and to give them healthy options. That's just my opinion. And I look at what is being offered now and I just say, particularly in breakfast, we can do better. So all I'm asking for is what's out there? Don't spend any money. Let me squash that rumor. Don't spend any money. It will take someone some time to seek proposals and see who is out there to help consult with us. Come back to the board, we'll decide if we spend any money or if we use, and they may come back and say, there's only three groups that do this and it's a billion dollars and we're just not going to do it. I'm just asking us to start the due diligence now as we're going forward over the next two years so that we're equipped to make the decisions moving forward.
Okay. Oh, we're going around. Go first. We're going in the order that we went the first time. So Board Member Thomas Tate, you have the floor.
I still just want to reiterate that I'm not opposed to what Kelly is saying. I'm opposed to the process that we're using to go about it. I don't want to create additional work for our superintendent without having all the information. Now, I understand you're asking for different information, but we haven't even had a chance to look at the information that is being provided. Let's at least do that first and determine what we need before we say we need something, before we even know what we have available to us already. I'm just opposed to creating work for work's sake when we haven't even taken the time to fully investigate what we already have.
Board Member Mohammed Kani.
I'm going to be supporting you, Mr. Byrne, and let me tell you why. As Mrs. Brunner was speaking, I thought about what you said and I actually want to hear from this RFP third-party, however way you want to phrase it, for some guidance on what I think could be a misconception that cooking from scratch is expensive. I'm not saying it's not, but I'm saying that that's something that we should maybe consider. It might translate to fewer options, right? We might not have the plethora of choices for the kids, but it may be doable and that's something that I'd like for us to consider. And I only say that because I make a point of having relationships with board members and superintendents far and away from us, but still within the state. And some of the smaller rural districts are still baking fresh rolls and serving chili and, I don't know, that may be the only option in a PB and J and cheese sandwich, always, you know, the standard option. And I just want to know if that's even possible, right? With the staff that we have and with the sort of, you know, budgetary resources we have. Because if that is an option, I'd like to have the opportunity to consider it. So for that reason, I will be in support of having just a fresh set of eyes that is something completely foreign to federal, DESI, state, whatever requirements. I want, we're local control, right? It's all about, we are closest to these students and we can provide for them in a way that the state and the federal government could not ever conceive of. And that begins in this room. I'm ready for the challenge and I think we can rise up to it and for that reason, I plan to support that. Thank you.
Any further Board comments or questions?
Okay, I do. I'm still confused about the scope, so I'm going to say, now we just added cooking from scratch and what the cost is. So we need to come up with a good scope of work for this RFP or else we're going to get, we're not going to get any quality bids in and it's just going to be a waste of time of Dr. Lathan and her staff. So we're adding a lot of stuff here. We're just throwing out ideas. We need to come up. That's something we agree on and something that's going to benefit us to make a good decision next year or two years and whenever the contract is up. So, does that make sense?
I think at this point, I'm in the position that I would abstain. I would like to see the results of the other audits that we have and then we might be able to move forward with an RFP to build the scope and determine if those audits wasn't sufficient enough to help us understand and learn what we really want to achieve in our school system for the food that we feed our kids. I think that would be-- I think that would be the route that I would go. I would abstain at this, right, at this point.
I'll withdraw this motion and consider representing it after the DESI audit.
Thank you, Board Member Burn. You currently have a recommended, or I'm sorry, a motion on the table that the board approved the student nutrition management expenditures as presented. Motion by Board Member Christ, second by Board Member Thomas Tate. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, we will vote. The motion that the board approved the student nutrition management expenditures as presented passes seven, nothing. Moving on to item 10.01, Reed Middle School construction bid. Dr. Travis Shaw is with us to present.
Good evening. This evening, I'm pleased to be able to present to you the Reed Middle School construction bid Tuesday, February 20th. Those bids were received. We did have two general contractors that submitted bids. The total project budget for this, the Reed Middle School project is $59,484,000, with a construction budget of $46,764,000. The two, even though we did have two bids, they did only carry a difference of about 1.5%. The low bid was received by DeWitt Construction, and it was for $39,796,890. Also a part of the construction budget, we do consider the demolition and abatement and purchase of property for around that project. So, the purchase of property, as a reminder, has been $713,000, and the demolition and abatement of the previous old Reed was $975,000. So, all of those things combined put us at a little over $41 million. And again, as a reminder, that construction budget was $46,764. So, well under the estimate where we're at. It's going to allow us to have a healthy contingency budget that we've put in place. We do know that we'll have change orders as we go through a two-year construction project. But extremely pleased, extremely thankful for those contractors that bid. And so, the recommendation before you this evening is to accept the bid from DeWitt Construction for $39,796,000, $796,890. A lot of numbers.
Thank you, Dr. Shaw. The recommended action is that the board approve the construction bid as presented. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
I'll second it.
Perfect. Motion from Board Member Burn, second from Board Member Mohammed Kani. Is there any further discussion on this?
So, the difference in cost is the $7 million? Is that, so it's $7 million under? Am I understanding that correct?
So, when you look at the, yeah, so if you take a look at just the construction bid minus the construction estimate, that's about $7 million. But part of the construction cost is also the demolition, the abatement, the purchase of properties. All of that falls under that construction cost. So, those totals right now are $41,362,552. So, that's a difference of about 5.4 million. And then, we do apply a contingency budget that we keep track of on our end, because there will be change orders. And so, you can expect that to be around a 3% on a new construction project. So, but what we will have-
For down, you mean, 3%?
Well, we would expect that there would be about a 3% add of the, to this, which is about 1.2 million that would be added through a two-year construction process. Could be less, could be more.
So, the savings are coming at roughly $4 million?
If we were to spend all of that contingency budget, yes.
So, $4 million? Can you, can you throw that on email, because I know I'm gonna forget it? What you just threw out, it's not here, all this that you just said.
I can, yeah, I'll be able to provide that information.
Further Board Member comments or questions?
Yeah, I can speak to this as one of the three Board Members who has been involved in these meetings with Navigate through this process, also with Mr. Christ and Mrs. Brunner. Yeah, this is really exciting. I mean, to get to this point and have a firm bid that's under what our budget was. I don't think there's, you know, what we're looking at here is hard costs. There's still soft costs on top of that. And the low hard cost affects potentially the soft cost too. And I don't think Dr. Shaw wants to commit to that. I don't think anyone wants to commit to anything yet. But we're looking at right here is a firm bid, so, and we're under what we projected for that amount. But because this is lower, it increases our likelihood that we'll be lower in the soft cost too. So, we're hoping, we're hoping. It looks favorable that the total savings on the total project will actually be greater than that $4 million. But we don't wanna commit to that yet. Is that fair?
That's correct.
Okay. And I'd just like to speak to the process, 'cause the process has been long, and I've been vocal along the way. And I think this is indicative of the process, of us focusing on the process and doing the process right, all the way back to the task force on facilities and those recommendations, and how we handle that, and how we handle the bond, to the district being open to our recommendation for the owner's representative, which ended up being Navigate, to Mrs. Brunner and Mr. Christ, sitting in on those meetings and helping us communicate with Navigate and the district. All of it, I think we got the process right. And without having done all that, you just increase the likelihood for variability and mistakes. And I just think this is evidence that the process worked well, and your team is very much in control and doing a fantastic job all along the way at all the steps in the process. We've got a ways to go, we gotta, we gotta build this, but having a firm bid in right now that's under budget is a great start and very indicative of the people that participated in the process the entire way.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from the Board?
Can I ask another question?
If, are there any, before we circle back around to you, are there any further questions or comments?
I just wanna say, it was money well spent to bring in Navigate, like you were saying. I think they could prove that they paid for themselves and then some. So, good job by Navigate, and good job by your team as well. So, thank you.
That was my question. To what extent was Navigate instrumental in this cost-saving? And I'm hearing that that was part of the process.
Well, you know, and they were, they were providing assistance through the entire process. They were providing us cost estimates at schematic design, at design development, at 70% construction documents, at 90% construction documents. And so, they were, there was suggestions that were put out to our team, to the design team, on what do you think about this? What do you think about this? It wasn't their job to tell the design team, you need to do this. Those were things that they brought about. They did a constructibility review. Once the, once the construction documents were at 90%, they brought a team in, and they reviewed both the documents and the drawings to ensure accuracy, which, but I can't speak highly enough about the architect. SAP Design, we've got a couple of members in the audience, they're fantastic to work with. Good, tight bids between two contractors speaks volumes for the type of drawings and documents that were put out. And good, solid bids that are under budget speak volumes to the fact that it was a very efficient, well-designed building. One of the things that we did in the very first meeting of designing this building was, what are our goals? And Kristy, who's in the audience, when I said, I want this project to be completed on time and under budget, she looked at me, she said, "Under budget?" And I said, "That's exactly what I said." And so, our hope is that we can be there, and we're off to a very good start with that. So, but we do have a great team, down to our project managers. Dr. Chris Ford, who's also here, who's stepped in as we've been through this transition, has done a fantastic job. And so, very thankful that he's been on the team to get us to this end point.
Thank you for that. Having all the right people in the room helps to get the right product. But in your estimation, hiring Navigate, 'cause that was something that the board had some discussion over, was integral to the success that we're seeing.
Yeah, I think it was, it was part of that, you know, four-legged stool, if you will. I mean, they were an integral part to that.
So, a good decision in hindsight, is what I'm hearing. Okay. Remember, we talked about this at some length? Okay.
Can I say, yeah, and now that you mentioned, I saw just before you said that, Mr. SAP and your team back there. You wanna stand up?
Yeah, I just realized when you start talking about-
This is the architecture team responsible. And thank you, and I know, you know, working with a, with a owner's rep may not be the best thing you wanna do, but they were, they spoke very highly of you and your flexibility and professionalism, working with them and getting us to this point. And we're not done yet, I'm sure. So, just wanted to acknowledge that getting us to this point, it certainly sounds like all indications are that your team has done a fantastic job.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion is that the board approve the construction bid as presented. We will now vote. The motion that the board approved the construction, sorry, bid as presented passes seven, nothing. Moving on to item 10.02, change orders and agreements.
So, normal issue you see in front of you, you will notice on there that we've got some architectural and engineering fees for the field and Wilder classroom additions. So, that, once approval of these particular consulting fees, we'll get that work started moving forward. That actually equals about $284,000 of the $364,000 in front of you. And so, and then you see a few change orders as well. So, any questions I can answer for you at this time?
Okay, the recommended action is that the board approve the change orders and agreements as presented. Do I have a motion? Motion from Board Member Makoski. Do I have a second? Second from Board Member Christ. Is there any further discussion or questions on this item? Seeing none, we will vote. The motion that the board approved the change orders and agreements as presented passes seven, nothing. Moving on to our quarterly bond update.
Okay, so, three months later, this will be a fairly short update, with the fact that we've got four of our six storm shelters under construction. We'll give a brief update around the safety and security work that's going on as well. Again, I love to start with this slide, because this shows the true impact of where throughout this district, the bond issue is going to affect all of our schools throughout the community with the safety and security. This project sequencing plan has been updated based on where we are with our current bidding process for our six storm shelters. You can see the anticipated construction timeline for all six of those storm shelters. We do have a TBD on Pipkin still, and then you can see that with the approval of Reed Academy, the construction, we say technically started back in October, because that's when we demoed the building. But two years from now, we should have a completed project. And then Pershing, again, starts in June of '26, once we can have those students that are currently in the old Jarrett from Pershing, or from Reed relocated, and we'll have that room for that particular project. You can see, we'll begin the design and bid process for the field and Wilder classroom additions and that construction timeline. And then, we are in the process right now of finalizing that scope of work for our door sensors, access control. That's the next projects on our safety and security. All of the glass film is completed throughout of our entire district, so good win for that. Once we finish these particular projects on the safety and security, we'll determine what dollars are left, and then we'll prioritize camera locations and roof sensors throughout the district. Project sequencing plan, again, early on, this is, we're planning to spend about five years, as you recall, doing all of these particular projects. So, still early on, but we'll continue to move through that as we go forward. Again, just another diagram of where the main projects are located, as well as the timeline in which we expect completion for our, throughout the district. Financially, just as a reminder, again, we've sold $190 million of the $220 million bonds. We did receive almost $12.3 million in premium on those bonds. Current to date, and again, these are all one month behind, but about $863,000 in interest that's been earned on those bonds. And so, you can see the charts as we continue to spend. This is the main front screen on the bond monthly financial report that you see each month during, as part of the Treasurers' report. So, safety and security, we have received all of the physical and procedural audits from all of our buildings. Our school police administration is currently dividing and conquering and going through all of those audits as we've received those. And then, once we can assess what those findings are, they'll meet with district administration, and we'll begin to prioritize what each of those findings are and what that means for those particular buildings. So, as you can probably imagine, with storm shelters, as walls and roofs begin to go up, they start changing very quickly. And so, these pictures, although they aren't very old, they're already outdated, because I believe all of the structures have started to be erected, but you can see where Man Elementary is, Wilder, I believe, looks very different than this right now. But the most recent video, or pictures we were able to get, Watkins, and then finally at Pittman, and again, this one looks very different. So, different stages of construction, different complexities of each of these projects, but we'll provide a great facility for all of these schools. This is one of the areas that, when you have a celebration of projects being well under budget, we've not been so fortunate on our storm shelters. And as you know, our construction estimates have been high, or if the construction estimates were low, the actual costs have been high. And so, you can see what those total budgets are, and you can see how these different projects are trending, some well over, some still under, and some slightly over. And so, we'll continue to track those as we move through. But that also, again, helps significantly when you have a project like Reed that's significantly under, and it helps to offset some of these overages. So, we will watch the most up-to-date video that Stevens Communication Team had put together for us. So, next steps, we will continue the work of designing and bidding the exterior door sensors and access control. We will be finalizing, hopefully very soon, the purchase property for the new Pipkin location. The design and bid process will begin for the classroom additions at both Wilder and Field. And then, later this summer, we do anticipate bringing architect recommendation to the board for the Pershing Middle School project. So, that- So that concludes my quarterly update. Are there any questions at this time?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Shaw. It's exciting to see all the progress that's been done in such a short amount of time. I mean, we're not even a year into having the bond supported by our community, and there's so much progress. So thank you for that update. There any questions from board members? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 11.01, our superintendent's update.
Mic check, one, two. I always wanted to say that, want to be a DJ in my next life, I tell you. Let's do it. Our Principal for a Day event was February 23rd, and it was a great success. There were 57 community members in our schools that morning observing the outstanding leadership our principals provide for our students and staff. This event continues to grow, and I was pleased by the feedback that we received. I want to express my appreciation to our principals for making this a meaningful experience, and to the community members who participated for giving their time, of their time to actively engage within our schools. Next week is our final SPS University of the School Year. It will be held on Tuesday, March the 5th, at Hillcrest High School. Dinner and the resource fair will begin at 5:30. I'll provide an update on what's on the horizon for SPS, and then families can participate in workshops on kindergarten readiness, school safety, funding, and our college and other topics, funding for college and other topics. Explore registration begins on Monday, March the 4th, for both seated and virtual learning options. Seated options for K-8 students will be June 3rd through June 28th. And virtual classes for first through 12th grade will be offered during two sessions, June 23rd through, June 3rd through 28th, and July 8th through August the 2nd. We will also provide summer learning packets free to students. Board members, thank you again for approving that expenditure at our last board meeting. The book packets will include reading books and also workbooks to help students in reading, writing, vocabulary, and math. And plus, students that extend attendance floor will have an opportunity to meet Clifford the Big Red Dog. As a reminder, spring break is upon us. March the 8th through March the 15th will be spring break, and the district office will be closed on March the 15th. Board members, that concludes my update.
Thank you, Dr. Lathan. That moves us to item 12.01, board comments. Are there any board comments at this time?
I wanted to make a comment. We engaged in some professional development as a board last week, and I think we acknowledged, or somebody did, the importance of listening and not just hearing. So with that note, I, I think it's important for me to have this conversation right now, to tell you that, you know, the inconsistencies or the issues that I listed with the discipline policy, you know, the lack of, the reference of JGR1, and the inconsistencies that are there, I enumerated two weeks ago at this table. And so, which is why I was surprised that just our own policy didn't come back to us corrected. And, you know, I get that English is my second language, but I feel that I have a pretty good command of the language. I articulate reasonably well. I don't have a problem effectively communicating in the other arenas of my life. So I'm trying to figure out how I can do better. So I email, I use my time in the boardroom to speak on issues and, and I really sincerely want to do better and be a better communicator and be a better team member. But I feel like that my, my opinions aren't received, so please reach out to me after the meeting to let me know. I thought it was pretty clear two weeks ago, but apparently I wasn't, so I want to do better. That's all.
Okay, any further board comments at this time?
Sure, I do. You know, I got to go to the Principal for a Day as well. It's great interaction by the community who saw the challenges that we have in our schools, but also saw a lot of good things that are happening. And there are a lot of good things happening in our schools. We just don't hear about them enough. And our board leadership was engaged as in everything we do. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions?
I, I attended the Principal for a Day luncheon as well, and I always leave that kind of an event. It's, it's heartwarming to watch it. There's a lot of sincerity expressed, a lot of positive emotion, and really just a recognition on the part of some of our community leaders as to the real challenges that are going on out there in our school buildings. And it's important that people, you know, see it for what it is, and then help us to do better. But there was a lot of insightful information shared, and one, and the whole room exploded into laughter when one community member said she, well, I won't quite quote her, but she said that she was a bit taken back when she was going to be assigned into a middle school, and she was very frightened by that, but she, she learned that it was great. I also today attended an event that's hosted by our foundation called Lunch and Learn, and today's guest speakers, Michelle Gavel and Terry Campbell. They support the Future Educator Program, where we are growing our own teachers here in R12. Very, very important in terms of teacher shortage and for a lot of reasons. And this summer, when I was teaching a class over at Missouri State, I had one of those young professionals in class, and she's being hired currently. So that's fun to kind of, for me, to see it from all sides. But I think it's a program we can be very, very proud of. We had, as a guest, and I'm not exactly sure how he knew about it, but a former principal from Rogersville and Raytown was there. And he spoke to how good of a program this is and how impressive it is. So anyway, I, I leave this meeting thanking everyone, and again, reiterating what I often say when I have the opportunity, and that is, it is a privilege to serve on this board.
Thank you.
I guess just real quick, I visited Bowerman and Glendale last week. And just to say, I just always enjoy these visits. I learn something every time, and I never know what I'm going to learn, but then I go in and spend however much time there, walk around, see the kids actively, students, kids actively engaged in learning, see a lot of teachers and what they're doing. And one thing I noted that I've said before, Bowerman is such a good building. Built in the 30s, and I mean, the thing's almost 100 years old, or almost 90 years old. And it was built so well that it at least appears to be still structurally sound and very much serving its purpose. Like, I, I just wanted to point that out, especially in a time where we're building new buildings. That thing lasts 90 years and can last a lot longer.
I will make just a couple of comments. I did not get a chance to participate in the Principals for a Day event this year. I really enjoyed it last year. I appreciate the opportunity that our superintendent has created for the community to see what is going on in Springfield Public Schools. I think it's important for community members to engage with our school buildings and to see for themselves both the strengths and the weaknesses of things that are happening in our schools and some of the needs, because we do value community partnerships. Our partnerships do help support all of the learning that happens in our, in our buildings. And so I think it's important for our community to see what's, what's needed and what's going on. I also wanted to state with regards to the board development meeting, I don't know. I, I, one, thank you, Scott, for coordinating that. I do think it was very interesting and informative. I think that I learned a lot about the way that our board beliefs vary, and our values, and how we hope to govern. I do see challenges in how we differ in our opinions, but I would hope that we continue on the process of creating a plan to figure out how to work better as a board, not as individuals, and understand that the more we adhere to what we can agree on, the better we can function to support the learning that happens in our district. And I think that's hopefully why many people have run for this, this opportunity, which is, which is a blessing. I would like to say that we had the study session two weeks ago, and I myself, as a full-time employee, really struggle with trying to keep up with the flood of emails that come in on Monday and Tuesday, the day of, of the board meeting, and me teaching on Tuesday. I get here right after teaching, have a very short amount of time to read all of the email questions that flood in. I really encourage our board members to spend those two weeks that we have formulating questions earlier, one, so that our superintendent can answer them in a timely fashion, so that those of us who want to come in here prepared can be prepared and not have to rush to read everything in my car on my way here after I get off of work. Because the majority of the questions that were sent through the board to our superintendent came in on Monday and Tuesday. Today, a whole lot, and I teach all day on Tuesday, and so I had very little time to read. All of us, and I've heard many of the board members say, want to be informed and want to make good decisions, and it's hard to make those good, informed decisions when you get the information at 3 o'clock on Tuesday.
All right, thank you, and I just had a few comments. I really, I was really happy with the way that the board self-evaluation went. And yes, thank you, Scott, for spearheading that. I think we learned some valuable information. Board Member Mahama Connie, to your point, I had written down, one of the things that I wanted to bring up this evening was Vice President Scott, Superintendent Dr. Lathan, we need your help in preparing for these board meetings. It is difficult, and I have not spoken with Dr. Lathan at all today about this, but it is difficult, I know, for her and her team to get a ton of emails the day of a board meeting. As a board, we have decided to structure ourselves so that most months, we have a study session, meaning that all board members receive the agenda and content the weekend before our study session. Our study session's an opportunity to ask questions, both prior to the board meeting, at the board meeting, and for the next two weeks following that, before we come to the regular meeting. So it's very difficult when those flood of questions come in. In addition, always know, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, I know she said this to the board earlier this evening, Dr. Lathan's door is always open, so if you have questions about items that have been voted on today that you know are going to come up next February, I would encourage you to meet with Dr. Lathan and her team between now and, and next year. I've also repeatedly requested that any, any requests that board members have, please place in writing to Dr. Lathan, Vice President Kreis, and myself. I've stated multiple times, I am not in charge of this agenda. We have a proposed agenda, and the board votes on that agenda every single board meeting. So I would appreciate if you see an issue with the agenda. On that note, I noted a typo. The typo on the bond says bond update for 2019. We'll fix that. But if you see an issue with the agenda, or you want something on the agenda, or you have questions about the agenda, please reach out to me prior to, you know, 30 minutes before our meeting. If you can help us with that, I think these board meetings will run a lot smoother and a lot faster. On that note, I love to learn, and Sarah Merkel, who is the parliamentarian who does presentations at the continuing education that we go to, she has a newsletter that she sends out every week or so that talks about parliamentary procedure and also board service. If anybody wants to be put on that email, please let me know, and I'll, and I'll get you in touch with, with her website, because I've learned a lot from there. On a happier note, I wrote down, Scott, to your note, we are not the most exciting thing that happens in our district, and that was very clear over the last two weeks. Going to the Principal for a Day, going to the Foundation Lunch and Learn, I missed it, but I've been to ones before, and they have them, and they do a great job, and an opportunity for our public to join us in our, our school buildings. And you get the other opportunity at SPS University. There are so many opportunities to be involved and see the amazing things that are going on in our school buildings. And I also just wanted to give a shout out to our board member, Dr. Thomas Tate, who won an award recently, Washington Avenue Baptist Church Changemaker Award, for her work with the students and children in our community, specifically as it relates to literacy. So I just wanted to say thank you for, for your service on the board and outside the boards. All right, our next upcoming meeting is a combined session, after I just noted that we usually have study and then a regular session. If board members can, can please make it a priority to get any questions prior to that board meeting, it would be much appreciated. That combined meeting is on March 26th. Okay, moving on, I will entertain a motion that the board adjourn this meeting.
I have a comment to make.
Oh, you have an additional comment.
A second round of comments. We don't usually do this, but I think this is appropriate. Since this was mentioned, I wasn't planning on commenting on this. But in regards to the asking of questions, you know, the public doesn't know what we're talking about. They don't see all the emails coming through. They could sunshine request them if they wanted to, and those are, that's done from time to time. But as one of the people that asks a lot of questions and was also firing some emails today, I would like to speak up because I find it interesting that the board members who are complaining about the way that we ask questions, or the amount of them, or the timing of them, or anything, are the board members who literally ask no questions by emails, ever, ever. I, okay, Ms. Kincaid, I do remember you asking some questions once about the closing of the schools that we did a few months ago, but outside of that, never. It's very clear where the questions come from. So how we go about it, I think, is interesting. It's easy to take that position when you ask no questions. When you don't, if you don't go through the process like another board member does, and that's fine. Everyone's process is different. And I choose not to judge other board members, how they sit in their seat. I don't care, serve how you want. But what happens, we have a study session, sometimes we have combined sessions. When we have a study session, questions before that don't make much sense to me unless it's based on format. If it's based on content, we need, the support of the study session is to hear the presentation. For me to see a PowerPoint presentation and to formulate questions on it before I get the narrative that the presenter gives us is just a waste of time. It's going to waste people's time. I want to hear what they say, that may formulate some questions, okay? Then we have a gap. I may fire some questions off in the interim, but we don't see the actual agenda get uploaded until the Friday before a Tuesday meeting. And the commitment that we've always had was get your questions in prior to noon on a Monday, when the board meeting's on Tuesday, because we just received the agenda on Friday night. By the way, the last two, two agendas prior to this one, I didn't even receive a notification, so I didn't know if it came in or not. So we're getting it on a Friday afternoon. Everyone has their lives to live on the weekend. This meeting in particular, I started asking questions around 8:00 PM Sunday night, which I don't think most people are doing this sort of thing at 8:00 PM on Sunday night. Some responses came back at some point in time on Monday. That may spur some other questions, so can, questions answered, more questions continue to roll in into Tuesday. I saw it as my responsibility, rather than to just not ask the questions on Tuesday that were follow-up questions to what I started on Sunday night, so that we could still provide an opportunity. And if Dr. Lathan and her team couldn't answer those that I asked on Tuesday, I would totally understand. But there were follow-up questions to what I tried to get in prior to the deadline that was given to us around noon on Monday. So just some clarification on that to the public who doesn't see the background of that. It is hard, and I think it would be totally understandable if on Tuesday, questions were still coming in, and Dr. Lathan had things come up and she couldn't get to it. I try not to put her in that position. But that's the nature of it when we get a document on Friday afternoon, and we have to respond by noon on Monday, and I continue to try and meet that obligation. And if I don't meet that obligation by Monday at noon, it's, it's understandable if it gets missed.
Thank you, and it's clear to me that perhaps the board needs to have a further discussion about this. As a reminder, you do get the agenda the day of or the day after that Vice President Kreis and I create the agenda. It's via email, so you do have some additional time in addition to the, the study session versus regular session. But it is clear to me that there's a disconnect here, and that perhaps the board needs to have further communication about this.
Can I make another comment?
Apparently we are doing this, sure.
Yes, we are. So those, Board Officer Meehan- So, those board officer meetings typically occurred before just a combined meeting or a study session, and just this more recently that are happening with both, but they're really vague. They don't have documents attached to them or presentations attached, it's just sort of like, this is, it's what we're going to have on the agenda, but not the actual items. Does that make sense?
It does.
So, I just wanted to point that out, and I'm, I'm sorry.
Sorry, it doesn't make sense, because you could go back to the previous agenda if it's not a working session, if it's not a combined meeting, you go back to the previous meeting and get all the attachments are on the previous agenda.
We had, at the bond update, we have personnel material that's in executive, none of that stuff exists. Specifically, personnel doesn't happen until Friday night.
Okay.
Right, so some of these items that I've been wanting to ask questions about do not live in the document that you refer to as board officer meeting. And today, I asked a question on Tuesday, I didn't even think about that question until the response came to Mr. Byrne's question. So, and of course, the responses are shared with the entire board, and sometimes you see a response to a question that you didn't ask, and you're like, oh, uh-huh, now I'm going, oh, so you start thinking about it. So, sometimes, you know, those, it just, it's the process, and I think that we should show each other grace and be patient.
I agree, but we also need to respect our superintendent's time when we're asking questions literally an hour before the meeting, or when we're on a break during the meeting asking to change something that is happening. So, again, I'm going to reiterate that I think that the board needs to have further conversation about this. This time, I will entertain a motion that the board adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Motion from Board Member Thomas Tate. Do I have a second? Second from Board Member Byrne. This time, we will vote. The motion that the board adjourn our meeting passes seven, nothing.